Happy New Year, everybody. Oh, yes, we have translation services, interpretation services, if anybody needs Spanish language translation.
Si alguien necesita traducción a español, tenemos la señora aquí que puede traducir. Pero ustedes necesitamos que ven la mesa ahí atrás, y hay aparatos que pueden llevar, y ella está hablando en español para ustedes.
So to report out from closed session, there is nothing to report out from closed session. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I guess I'm on for that too. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
There are, we have three.
Okay. And I will remind folks that for public comments for non-agenda items, we are limiting conversations to three minutes. And we'll see how that goes.
And they're not conversations, they're just comments.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, so I just am up here to do a little bit of rumor control. Over the past few days, I've had a couple of phone calls from concerned parents of students at HHS or from the junior high around a rumor that the district was pursuing eliminating AP and honors classes at the high school. And I want to stand here publicly and say that is not the case. We are not looking at eliminating either AP or honors. In fact, on consent, we have the single plan for the high school, which actually has a goal around increasing enrollment for students in AP and honors classes. I will say, there is a conversation that has begun around potentially changing our ninth and 10th grade English offerings. There is a tracking method in those classes for an advanced class and then a college prep class, but neither class is AP or honors designated or recognized by the UC system as such. No decision's been made on that. It's something that will... I've spoken with Bill Halliday and asked him to engage in a process with his staff, with parents at the school, to examine what would be the best way to offer English to our ninth graders. And that will be a process that will take some time. I don't anticipate any decision being made for probably about a year. And so there's nothing that is going to be imminently happening. I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Conversations are being had with staff, but those are preliminary. And so I just wanted to make sure the air was clear on that. And I would also say, you know, as a parent myself with students at the school, I wouldn't want to send my kids to a school that wasn't constantly examining its practices and ways to better serve all of its students. And so certainly, I think it's in our best interest and it's our duty to be looking at new and innovative ways and to be looking at educational research for the best way to realize educational success for everybody. So with that, please hear, AP and honors are here to stay. We're not entertaining that change, nor will we be. So, thank you.
We have two additional public comments. The first is Michael Villa. Villa, thank you.
Mr. Villa, I will follow up and I would ask, you know, in the future, when these things come up, feel free to call me. We've talked before and/or Mr. Miller, and we can certainly work through those issues. Thank you.
Next public comment on non-agenda item is Randy Parmeter on Advanced Standing English.
Just to add to that previous comment, my daughter actually informed me of that last night, which I thought was a bit odd. I don't think that we should have to go out of our way to talk to you about getting bathrooms open. I think that's something that necessarily should happen, but that's... Anyways, I'm here to talk about, you had mentioned Advanced Placement's not going away. Well, that's not what Advanced Standing English is. It's a little different structure. So I'm here because I heard rumor that they might be looking at getting rid of it. I have a daughter that's a sophomore right now. She actually takes the class. Last year, she was in a regular English class. And her teacher said, hey, you might want to consider this class next year because I think that it would suit you. And she's taking it this year, and she loves it, and she's having a great time in it. And she's, you know, doing well. I have three more kids that are all in the junior high that will be coming through. And I want to make sure that they have the same opportunity that my older daughter has had as well. These classes, I understand, they're not recognized by the UC system. I get that. But what it is, is it's scaffolding for kids that are trying to work their way up to Advanced Placement. And if they don't have an opportunity to elevate themselves to be ready at the time that they go to an AP class when they're a junior or a senior, it's going to be difficult for them. So I think that it needs to be considered keeping it or really keeping it because it's an opportunity for people to elevate their abilities and have an opportunity to have a better chance when they get into junior and senior year. So, but you had said that AP classes are not going away, and that wasn't the rumor that we were addressing. So just want to make that clear that what you said might have been true, but it's not addressing what we're up here talking about.
Yeah. Cool. And happy to talk with you, and I'd encourage you to talk to Mr. Halliday more about this issue. No change is going to happen to AS, like I said.
I'm sorry.
No change will happen to the AS classes without some sort of process.
Absolutely. But we just want to, I mean, there's a bunch of others here as well that, you know, we're ready to speak as well. But we just want to make it clear that, you know, we're very vested in this program, and we want to make sure that it doesn't get pulled out from underneath us. You know what I mean?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the consent agenda, item nine. Do we have any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And we do have donors recognized as we do every month. So thank you to Kiwanis, the Zeller Box, and the Ford V8 Club.
I want to learn more about the early Ford V8 Club. I'm like all in on that. That sounds great. I have an early Chevy V8, so we can... Okay, moving on to our first item on the agenda, 10-1, Student Learning, and Erin Fender.
Good evening. I'm here just quickly to introduce Noreen Doherty. I'm so pleased that she's here with us tonight. Noreen and I and Jeff Frainy and our teachers have been working together for quite a bit of time. We, as you know, have been involved in the READY initiative for five years, five years. And that's, a big part of that is where we do a kindergarten screening in the first couple of weeks. So this is an important part of the pieces of data that we collect. No better person to talk about not only the wider efforts. This is not just a Healdsburg Unified School District effort, but the county efforts. It's a cross-sectional partnership. But also, she'll be reviewing the HUSD data with us. So I'm so pleased to bring Noreen up here.
And just for the trustees, we're having technical difficulties with the monitors up here, so follow on your machines, please.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Can everyone hear me okay? Technical difficulties aside. Okay, so my name is Noreen Doherty, and I'm the manager for the READY program. READY stands for the Road to Early Achievement and Development of Youth. And I apologize in advance for getting the date wrong. I know today's the 15th.
Noreen, you might want to up your mic to your height and not mine?
Yes, okay. You can still hear me. So as Erin shared, READY is a cross-sector partnership focused on increasing access to quality early learning and care as well as supporting the transition of early learners from youth into kindergarten. So READY is funded by First Five Sonoma County and is implemented by the Human Services Department with the Upstream Investments Initiative. And we partner with eight local school districts, many different early learning partners, including the Department of Health Services Cradle to Career Initiative. And again, READY has been around since 2013, conducting the ongoing background research to be able to pilot and now scale and implement a common kindergarten readiness assessment for Sonoma County. So what is school readiness? School readiness is many things. At the individual level, school readiness includes a set of social, emotional, academic, and self-regulation behaviors that a student needs to be able to be successful in school. But it doesn't stop there. It also includes the capacity of families, the school, and the community to be able to support students to enter kindergarten ready to learn. There are lots of different factors that are associated with school readiness that are both positive and negative. Some of the negative risk factors in the first five years of life that are associated with lower school readiness scores include poverty, parental depression, single parenthood, and housing insecurity. Factors that are positively associated with school readiness include access to early learning and care and education and early learning activities like reading at home. So the difference in these factors does show up early in our students, especially between our low-income and students of color as compared to their white peers coming from middle and high-income families. That's what's known as an achievement gap. But what it really is, is an opportunity gap. We're talking about a disparity, a difference in the access for opportunities for our students. So I really want to make that statement known that we're talking about an opportunity gap. We're talking about issues of equity, really. So how do we measure school readiness? We do this in a few ways. The main tool that we use is called the Kindergarten Student Entrance Profile. It's the KSEP, as it's known. It's a 12-item observational tool that has six items around school knowledge and six items around social, emotional readiness. The teachers observe their students in the first four weeks of school, and then they score them on these 12 items, and then they get categorized into one of these four categories ranging from not yet ready to ready to go. We also collect parent surveys that help fill in some of the gaps of information around those socio-demographic factors, including access to quality early learning. So that helps us get a stronger picture. And in addition, we like to make presentations and attend as many meetings as possible to get feedback from the community. So these are the districts that participated in this last school year. We were able to assess about 20% of all incoming kindergarten students in Sonoma County. So we feel that this population sample size is validated enough to be able to generalize the results for the broader community. This slide shows the demographics of last year's cohort. I'm still pulling the data for this year's, for the countywide kindergarten cohort as it compares to students that were in the READY cohort to demonstrate further that the composition of the sample size is closely related to all of counties. So therefore, we're able to make, again, generalizations from the data for the whole county. So let's get into the... Oh, yes. IEP for kindergartners? Yes. That's what we hear, and the early screening is a good thing. So this past year, this current year, less than two out of five students were ready to go, and less than seven out of 10 were ready or almost ready to go. These are countywide stats we're looking at. Sorry, I'm starting with county, and then we'll get into district. Yes. So this is also countywide here. This shows a four-year trend, and we're seeing a slight decrease over the last four years, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So to figure out, you know, what's going on, why are we experiencing a decrease in school readiness? We need to disaggregate the data further to look at what's going on. So right away, we see a huge disparity between English-speaking students and Spanish-speaking students with two out of four English-speaking students entering school ready to go, where only sadly, one out of four Spanish-speaking students are ready to go. Further, looking at data trends over the last four years or four-year analysis, you see big disparity between English and Spanish-speaking students. And this data, it's hard to look at, it's sad, but hopefully, it's a call to action. So you can see a huge opportunity gap showing up there. Can I ask a clarifying question? Absolutely. So is this assessment done in Spanish or in English? Both. So if the student is entering kindergarten, they are giving this assessment, if they're English learners in Spanish? Correct. Or whatever their home language is. It does involve, of course, requiring translation. But yes, we make sure that no matter what the student's language spoken at home as they are given the assessment or the observation using their home language. So that factor's eliminated there. Thank you. So in addition to disaggregating data by language spoken at home, we look at income. So children whose family income is $100,000 or more are over two times more likely to enter kindergarten ready to go compared to students whose family's income is approximately $35,000 or less. And then further disaggregating, looking at home language and income at the same time, you see that 43% of English-speaking families earning $100,000 or more, while only 4% of Spanish-speaking families earn the same. So now we'll look at your local data. So if you recall from the previous slide, you're actually doing really well compared to the county as a whole. We did see a dip last year, but you're back up, so congratulations on that. And I know you have this in your packet, so I won't spend too much time on this.
Well, actually, like, that's a big change from 1819 to 1920 in both directions. Do we know why? Do we have any idea?
We have to do further analysis to tease apart those data points because there's so many factors. So Erin and Jeffrey and I are working on looking into those deeper factors.
It's kind of bizarre, right? Anyway, okay.
Yeah, because it's a countywide effort, they collect and crunch the data. We had our first meeting with Noreen, and the teachers have also seen the data. So we're, you know, trying to understand it. We're still at that point, asking ourselves some questions, and, you know, there's some calibration.
Yeah, and like, what worked, right? Something worked, so let's figure out what it was and do more. Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, that's the fun part of my job, is figuring out what to do. That's positive. Oops, sorry. Okay, so there's your data. And this is moving forward, we're only looking at Healdsburg data, Unified School District. So these are other factors that do impact school readiness, factors like gender. For example, females tend to score higher on school readiness assessments. Some home language, as we talked about, is a factor. IEP status is a factor, as well as preschool attendance is an impacting factor for school readiness. These are your scores as compared to the counties. So HUSD is in green, and countywide scores are in yellow. So congratulations, you're doing really well. This is a disaggregation of HUSD's data by home language and preschool attendance. Sure. Oops. Yeah, so if we are looking to the left side of the screen, that's where the ideal category for students to be in, ready to go. So you can see, close to 63% of HUSD students are landing in the ready-to-go category, whereas it's compared to the countywide in gold at 36%. Well, it makes sense that it all is going to round out, oops, to 100%, right? So if you have the majority of your students landing in the ready to go, then you're going to see lower categories in the... I'm sorry, lower rankings in the lower categories. So it's a good thing. All the green rods total up to 100%. So you ideally want to see the majority in the far-left category of ready to go. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
The four categories.
Yeah.
So can I ask you to actually go back even one more? And the home language, so this reflects all of our kindergartners were assessed. So 61% of the home language is English, and 37% Spanish?
So this is conversation, or an ongoing conversation, of how to collect the most accurate data. So we get the data point of home language from the parent surveys.
Yes.
And unfortunately, we don't get as strong of a response rate as we would hope, which is not unique to your students.
We do have an anomaly also in the kindergarten data, not data, the kindergarten enrollment this year. We are down to below 40% of our kinders are English language learners. So this is a first since I've been in the district. We generally have 60 to 70% of our kindergartners. Out of a class, we were just having this conversation, Emily and I and Ayuda Pacheco the other day, out of class of 20, they're seeing six to seven of their students are English language learners. So we're not sure if this is this kindergarten class or a demographic shift in our community.
So that really is a snapshot of our...
It is, for this year. This year's kinders, yes. We have fewer English language learners in this kindergarten class than we have ever had.
Okay. We did touch on this. Okay, so additional factors that impact school readiness, again, family reading at home, screen time, that's a self-report. So that one, we're working on getting better data on, as well as time spent outside. This is one of my favorite slides to look at. This is a disaggregation of each item within the kindergarten student entrance profile. So this particular piece of data can help support focusing of curriculum and programs and at the broader level, investments. So for example, so your district is in the green, and the countywide is in the blue. So for example, if you look at the social, emotional mastery side, you might think about focusing on exhibits, impulse control, and maintains attention to task as factors to include in programming. So this is a slide that shows some highlights of how to use the READY data. And this is a slide that talks about how your district has been using the READY data successfully. So one of the things that we know that can support the transition from early learning into kindergarten is connecting kindergarten teachers with their preschool teachers. Healdsburg was successfully able to implement a preschool fair last year, so that's a great example of that type of activity. Yay! Also getting teachers to talk to each other within the system. So I know that that happened this last year, that preschool teachers and kindergarten teachers actually had a little field trip and interacted with one another. So that's wonderful, and that's something that we want to replicate with many districts, all the districts.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Do you have access to the other districts' information as well?
The ones that are participating in READY, yes.
Are we leading our county in terms of these statistics? And if not, could we, we should replicate what they're doing successfully?
Absolutely. Currently, this year, Healdsburg is leading out of all the other districts.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Yes, it is a great question. And that brings me to this last slide of what are we doing moving forward? So yes, your district is doing great, but we did see a decrease in the previous year. In addition, we're seeing a decrease countywide. So what's going on, and what are we going to do about it? This is really, as I said earlier, a call to action. So again, we are funded by First Five, so I have been, READY has been commissioned to conduct a broadscape, landscape analysis to look at the state of school readiness within the county. So what that involves is pulling from multiple data sets, not just our READY data. We're going to be conducting more key informer interviews, community conversations to gather more qualitative data to help give us a better picture of what's going on countywide. In addition, now we have four years of data from the same district, so we're able to look at those trends. Previously, to be able to make a long-term recommendation, we need to have a certain amount of years of data to make statistically significant recommendations. And now we have that data, so we're moving forward with that analysis, which is super exciting. And this is going to align with First Five Strategic Planning Process that they do every four years. So they'll be able to use this data to help prioritize their investments as well. This is, again, supported by First Five, Cradle to Career, and the Community Foundation. So other funders are interested in this landscape analysis to be able to use as a strategic planning tool for the future for community. So that concludes my presentation.
Just wanted to say a couple things, and thank you to the kindergarten teachers who make this happen, do the screening and work with our parents. And increasingly, our parent outreach and education coordinators to get the parents knowledgeable to fill out the survey and help them with that. And also, this happens in the first, really, six to 10 weeks of school. So these are kids, you know, that are not part of the TK through 12 system. We run a preschool. As Noreen and I have both said, the intersegmentality about this, around it being a real partnership with our early childhood education centers in our community and throughout the county, I think this is an important piece. So while we highlight it here in our school district, we realize that this is an entire community effort here. And there are a lot of people in this room, thankfully, tonight, that play a role in that. So I want to thank you, including Corazon.
I would like to echo that thank you.
So I do have another question, though, because I know here in Healdsburg, our preschools not do Spanish instruction. And so the kids are in English preschool, and then they get assessed in Spanish because they're ELs? So I'm wondering if that's a disconnect and if that's true data?
That's an interesting point. It is, however, the student comes into the classroom and is most optimally able to communicate is how they're assessed. So if the student comes in and is more affluent with their Spanish speaking, then that's what they're going to be assessed in.
And I'll say you're hitting a nail on the head. And something we think, an anomaly in the data in years past in particular, and doing some additional training with our staff members and us, really, to understand how best to perform this assessment in those first early weeks. Some of our kindergarten educators are bilingual, some are not. So that's a point of training and collaboration. And as I, the word I'm looking for, of making sure everybody's kind of on the same page.
Making sure everyone's calibrated.
Calibrating, thank you.
We need that greater reliability, so everyone's seeing the same thing when they look at an assessment, and assessing in the same way, if that makes sense. Would that help?
Well, I just wonder if it's...
It's a good point.
If it would be informative and valuable to get that assessment in both languages for those students just to see where they're stronger, because...
I like that idea, yeah.
They've just learned a lot of vocabulary now around education or academic things in English, but Spanish is their native, and that would be...
Thank you. Yeah. We could pilot it with your district.
I would like to...
Sorry, kindergarten teachers. Yeah.
To follow up on President Del Rey said earlier is, why is it different this year? And I don't know if you can go back and say, what were the kids, this year's first graders? What was their incoming background? And then the year before that? And then again, look at this year's, and again, next year? So at least start with this year and say, what services did you have? Did you go to preschool, et cetera, et cetera? So what makes it, what seems to make difference? So we could capitalize on that.
Absolutely.
You know, I see Corazon sitting out here, and I know they do a lot with many of our kids, as well as a lot of the preschools, et cetera. I can get off into Rotary, et cetera, but I won't. But what are those things that the community is doing to support our kids that seems to be making a difference, perhaps? And it would be good to know.
I agree, and that is definitely the focus of this landscape analysis at the broader level. And to be able to dive deeper within the district level, that'll be further strengthening of partnerships to be able to leverage what we have and leverage what you have. Yeah, so now, again, that we have that multiple years where we're able to make the case for whatever we find that is statistically significant. So, yeah, we've got a work cut out for us, we find that is statistically significant. So yeah, we've got a work cut out for us, but it's an exciting thing, you know, it brings hope. Yeah.
Chris and Erin, just remind me, we, our latest sort of assessment is that we have preschool seats. There's, there's, we're not, what am I, we don't have a shortage of preschool spots for people who are looking for preschool, right? I mean, we have a good coverage in Healdsburg of people who want preschool and availability of preschool options. Do we know where we're at with that right now?
Yes and no, right? It's always getting information out to families, making sure that they're aware of what their options are. We do have, I think, a small waiting list of one or two kids for full day program.
Makes sense.
Half day, we still have openings. So afternoon, half days, we have openings. But I'll tell you, providing information to the parents of three and four-year-olds is, is challenging. And so that's still a barrier is, is information.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll just share that something that we include in the longer presentation is more information from the parent survey. We look at dosage of ECE, you know, how long, how many days? And that educates us on the barriers that families face with income and access and hours not meeting my needs being at the top. So that's something that we look forward to analyzing over the four years to again, make statements about those trends. So we can hopefully provide a tool to focus investments in programming.
Right.
Thank you. I know.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Really helpful. Okay. Moving on to our next topic, 10-1B Portrait of a Graduate. Mr. Bandit, who?
So it is my pleasure to introduce Chuck Wade, Jessica Pragolski, and Sarah, are you coming up? Are you, Sarah's gonna hide in the back? Sarah Lundey. They all work at the Sonoma County Office of Education. And I've actually worked with Chuck and Sarah for years and we jokingly refer to them as Chuckica. But colleagues of ours that have been engaged in really important work in the county, and I don't want to take away from their presentation, but it is my hope that the portrait of a graduate that has been created for the entire county will become a starting point for us in a visioning process and a strategic planning process as we encounter, as we start the strategic planning for the new LCAP, the three-year plan for the district. So this is our first introduction into it as a district for the board. And again, my pleasure to introduce Chuck and Jessica.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to give you a very brief overview of the process through which the Sonoma County Portrait of a Graduate was developed, tell you a little bit about who was involved in that and who contributed to the product that we have so far. And then talk a little bit about what might happen next and what is happening in, in other parts of this county as well as sort of how it fits into the broader picture of what's happening around the country.
Want to talk a little bit about the process?
The, uh, this process was sponsored by the Sonoma County Career Technical Education Foundation facilitated by, by folks from Sonoma County Office of Education as well as consultants, including Patel for Kids and, and others. We convened a, a large group of people from throughout the county, including educators, but also industry and community partners from many different sectors to design a process through which to, to gather community input. A smaller group was then tasked with gathering data, making a presentation about what a portrait can be, and then collecting data from, from people from all, all kinds of, of paths throughout the county. At its simplest, a portrait of a graduate is really an articulate articulation of a community's hopes and dreams for the kinds of knowledge, skills and, and attributes that they hope their young people can develop and demonstrate. Really, I guess, something that we hope we all can develop and demonstrate. And then sort of going a little bit deeper, a portrait can really be a, a north star for how a district, a site, a community makes decisions about how to think differently about school experiences for, for students. You're looking at a little bit of a timeline for the development of this process. You can see a lot of, a lot of work went into this. Ultimately, about 600 people completed surveys, contributed to the data collection that, that resulted in the portrait. We'll give you sort of a, a quick look of geographically speaking about where in the county these presentations and data collection forums were held.
It's important to note that these were both community conversations as well as a formal follow-up survey. And so it was very, very important because it is a collaboration between entities within our county, that it was geographically representative of folks living and working and learning within, within this county.
Similarly, we have a little bit of a breakdown of self-identified sort of walks of life that, that people came from. Note that these are self-selected, some probably more parents than 9%, but only 9% identified primarily as parents.
So you only had the option to select one area in which you identified. So if I'm a parent and I work in industry, I most likely chose industry and, and may also be a parent. But the, the 9% is a little bit of a misleading number for the fact that we know many other parents were involved. What's really particularly powerful to point out here is that I think the, the great sort of celebration of this work is that it included, if you sort of add up the numbers between pre-K-12 education and higher education folks, that's about 50%. That's about half of respondents. But, but again, that point of pride is that it does also importantly involve other community members. And I think this does, and we'll say briefly more about this in a moment, distinguish a portrait of a graduate from some other efforts like identifiable student learning outcomes or ESLSR's Expected Student Learning, right? Because it really is informed importantly by educators. We know our students, we know our communities, but also by the folks that receive them into the world upon, upon graduation. And so I know that the Healdsburg and their participation in this design team were really instrumental in pushing for that, that it was informed by our community and as well by, by our educators who are part of that community. But it isn't exclusively an educational effort. And I think that's important to call out.
This is a, a list of several mini of the groups that were important in contributing to this effort. So each of these groups received a presentation and had a chance to contribute to the survey as well as complete empathy interviews. What you're looking at here are examples of portraits or graduate profiles from other districts and communities. As I mentioned, this is something that's happening throughout the country now. And you'll maybe recognize this. Jessica mentioned ESLSR's and, and SLO's, Student Learning Outcomes. What differentiates the Portrait of a Graduate work from that work is really what, what happens next, I think. The, the portrait work is sort of envisioned as a trajectory that, that moves beyond just identifying these student outcomes, but also really excavating the, the district opportunities for all students to master and demonstrate these skills, this knowledge and these attributes. That's really the work that happens next. One of the things that we're happiest about with the outcome of this work, you'll notice our document looks a little bit different from those. We worked with a professional design firm, Good Good Studios from Sonoma in, in creating the assets for this work. And you'll see also on this poster, the, the six outcomes that were identified by contributors to this work. Curiosity, empathy, communication, collaboration, ethics, and initiative.
One thing worth pointing out, across the sectors that were surveyed, curiosity overwhelmingly was the top attribute or the top outcome identified. So whether you are an educator, a business owner, someone who works in the nonprofit world, a parent, curiosity was at the top of the list across those groups overwhelmingly, in some cases double the other responses. Make, make what you will of that. It's definitely something that this group of folks who continues to engage in the Portrait of a Graduate work are interested in investigating further. Point out a couple of things. We won't necessarily belabor or read verbatim each of the descriptions, but through the help of Good Good Studios and the design team, we were able to create language that really explains what we mean by that outcome, but also that is pretty actionable. So you can imagine, for example, a teacher being able to say, okay, I might even be able to create a rubric of sorts of what that might look like. And even for a student to be able to do ultimately some self-assessment. Am I there yet? And really think about what that might look like in third grade or seventh grade PE or, you know, ninth grade English, each of these, these attributes and outcomes. So curiosity again, empathy, communication, collaboration, ethics, and initiative. Do you want to share a little bit about the surprise in terms of those terms?
Yeah. One, one interesting thing that we found, those are all very sort of human qualities, right? Several years ago, we engaged in a somewhat related process with, with industry partners to develop work-ready qualities that, that local industry partners thought were really important for, for young people entering the workforce to possess. Those were very technical and some of them very academic. Surprisingly, that's, that's really shifted and it was very clear in the responses that we were, we were getting. Whereas several years ago, industry partners really emphasized, you know, kids need to be able to make change and speak plainly and, and things like that. Now they were very much talking about working with other people, being tolerant and, you know, being good teammates. So there's, there's been a sea change a little bit and, and I think it's reflected in this portrait.
Couple of things in closing, and perhaps this is the last slide, although I think there are a few more. Either the clicker's not working or.
I think that was the last one.
It is the last one. Okay. So a couple of things worth, worth pointing out. There are several assets that Chuck spoke of. So things like small and large posters, bookmarks, which we will make available to any and all of you. In fact, we'll have some here ready for you as you leave tonight, if you'd like. Thanks to Healdsburg's leadership and insistence, those, there is parity between English and Spanish assets. Initially, only a few of the assets were produced in both languages and now all of them are. So we'd like to make that available. And then just briefly to say that the work next involves actually Healdsburg District being one of the partners and leaders and thinking about what this looks like. They, the phrase that is most often used is moving from poster to practice. So while we think we have a beautiful poster that really represents the hopes and dreams and aspirations of our community, it's only as good as what happens next and ensuring that we're actually teaching for and giving students the ability to practice and master these outcomes. And, and really in conversations that we've had with the, the Healdsburg leadership team, seeing this as a possible container for a lot of the efforts that they're engaging in already, that you're engaging in already, and, and not necessarily one more thing, but something that could help us investigate our commitment towards equity in this district. Something that could help us investigate the tremendous amount of work that we've done in math education, in trauma-informed practices and social emotional learning, that this might be an opportunity to have it be a, a container for those things. And I think other districts are watching and following suit. And we're really appreciative that, that Healdsburg's thinking about taking this on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I wanted to say really quickly, I know that when I attended one of, I guess it was the town hall, so to speak, for looking at combining into one elementary district. Principal McGuire had the portrait of the gallery up, the, excuse me, the portrait of a graduate up as kind of our guideline to facilitate our beginning conversation, which I thought was so neat to see. Just even at the elementary level, we're talking about elementary schools and here it was as our springboard. So I thought that was really exciting and it was a great place to start. It was some common language we could all get around. So it's, it was fun. Neat to see that come together. Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah. I want to thank the CTE Foundation and the county office as well. CTE Foundation really is what spurred this and kind of held with it through almost a two-year process. Bill Halliday and I were both on design team and Aracely was there in, in a bunch of different roles. So this took its time. It was a lot of information gathered. And thanks to our county office for taking the leadership in this. It's a nice document for us to have at the districts.
And one last thing, I think Jessica captured it brilliantly. We do hope that this can become a container that, that houses our vision and, and our strategic plan for the district. So we will be engaging stakeholders around this and what empathy looks like in Healdsburg and how we can instill that in our students. So more work to come, more conversations around this.
And I especially love that I don't think I heard one acronym. So we're really talking about this in like normal language around people and students and like opportunities and vision and stuff, which thank you for that. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Moving on to item 10-1C, the elementary school design team. So we're gonna do this, I'm just gonna outline, we're gonna have the presentation, and then we're gonna go to public comment. And then our next agenda item is the board discussion about all of it. So just so you know, that's what we're going to be doing. Thank you, Erica and Jeff.
I'm gonna call up everybody who's presenting. So if you want to come up now, Holly and Lisa. I'm not going to be up here alone tonight. But I am, good evening. And I am really excited and honored to be here tonight with the elementary design team presenting our recommendations to you. And before we jump into where we'd like to go, I just want to take a brief minute to review how we got here. And I promise that part won't be long. But so in response to issues regarding equity in the district, the district formed the Equity Task Force, as we know, convened for the first time in September of 2018 and met several times throughout the year. At the end of last school year in June 2019, the school board approved their Equity Action Plan. There are lots of parts of that plan related to different things that could happen in the district related to improving equity. But a key component in there was the unification and the coming together and bringing our elementary schools into one program or one school. And that was based on a lot of feedback that was received, in particular at the Equity Town Hall meetings where families shared their experiences of exclusion and hurt caused by the division of students into our two programs. So this school year in September of 2019, we convened the first meeting of the elementary school design team to develop a process for re-envisioning our elementary school programs and the configuration. The design team has met monthly. We held the town hall meeting that Trustee Kiff mentioned in October. We solicited input at Charter Governance Council meeting, at the Healdsburg Elementary School Governance Council meeting, through our site faculty meetings, an ELAC meeting, and through parent and staff surveys. The job of the design team was to gather all of the stakeholder input and then to review it and to see what issues rose to the top. And so what we're gonna present here tonight is the encapsulation of what we heard from parents and staff about what they want our elementary school to look like. And speaking for myself, and I think the entire design team, we're excited to share our recommendations for what we believe will be an incredible instructional program, an educational experience for all of our students. So I'm gonna pass it on to Lisa Pilonini, fifth grade teacher, and Holly Fox and Monica Smith, both parents, to talk about the six key components of the instructional program. Sorry.
Good evening, good evening. I'm here to talk about how important that survey responses were from our community and also our staff members. One of them, the components that came out on top was PBL, Project-Based Learning. And as you know, it's been a big success for the last 10 years. So I'm hoping that this unique program will continue. It's a unique program in Healdsburg because no other school has project-based learning. And I find that our students get a chance to work with real-world situations. They also, this instructional program has, allows them access to the 21st century skills. We call them the four Cs, being creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and communication through their projects, by allowing also for us teachers to differentiate with each student and following the common core at the same time. So through their projects, these 21st century skills are important for all the students in Healdsburg. And so I'm giving, I'm hoping that as we bond or put our. And so I'm giving, I'm hoping that as we bond our, put our classes and schools, our schools together as one, that we continue with project-based learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly Fox and I was honored to be part of this Elementary School Design Committee. So Spanish instruction, our district has a long and varied history of Spanish instruction at the elementary level, as you all know. But in this survey, this past fall, majority of parent survey respondents said Spanish instruction was extremely important, including both Span, Spanish language and English language respondents. For majority of families with children who already speak Spanish, further Spanish language instruction in reading and writing was also extremely important. Staff results were slightly less conclusive with between 42 and 46% of staff respondents saying that Spanish language instruction was extremely important, both for native Spanish speakers and non-native Spanish speakers. Our recommendation is to include a Spanish language program in our elementary school that helps our students become global citizens who will thrive in a culturally diverse world. We would like to see our non-native Spanish speakers leave elementary school with a foundational knowledge of Spanish, including basic conversational skills that will lead them to succeed in our secondary program. We would like to see our bilingual students deepen their understanding of Spanish with reading and writing skills that will lead to biliteracy in our secondary program. In our design committee conversations, we found that Spanish instruction supports several of the Portrait of a Graduate characteristics, including empathy, communication, and collaboration. Enrichment, again, the vast majority of survey respondents felt that inclusion of enrichment opportunities in our elementary school program was extremely important. Enrichment was also highlighted in the comments people shared at the town hall with calls to increase both, both the frequency and diversity of the offerings. One commenter suggested that, for example, the dramatic arts build empathy, while another said that enrichment should quote, "be diverse and rotating, we should be introducing as many new enrichments as possible." Our recommendation is that a strong enrichment program that goes beyond what teachers are already including in their classrooms be a part of the future elementary school program.
Hi, I'm Monica Smith, also part of the Elementary School Design Team and parent of two first graders at HES. Our recommendations for paraprofessional support in each classroom, small class size, and small group instruction, all complement one another to create the optimal environment for student-centered learning. Paraprofessional support is critical in helping the teacher meet the different academic, social, and emotional needs of all students. While behavior management is one benefit of having another trained adult in the classroom, the emphasis should really be on small group instructional support. The personalized learning model requires small class sizes in order to really achieve differentiation and meet the needs of each student. The team recommendations for average class size in kindergarten is 18 students, in first and second grade is 22 students, and in grades three through five is 25 students. Small group instruction scored high on the priority list in staff surveys as well as both English and Spanish, school family surveys, and in-person responses at the town hall meeting last fall. This environment allows for enhanced student-teacher communication and assessments which help identify where students are in terms of benchmarks and where interventions or acceleration are recommended.
Good evening, my name is Edma Fiegadoa and I teach third grade at Fitch Mountain Campus.
Irma, you can pull the mic down.
Oh, yeah. I don't have to stand on my tippy toes.
Get on your tippy toes.
So, um, so I'm a teacher at Fitch Mountain Campus, my name is Edma Fiegadoa, and at our campus, the teachers decided on implementing the specialist model for various reasons. One is that it allows teachers to focus on, on two subjects. So one teacher would focus on math and science while the other teacher would focus on reading and social studies. And students would have two caring adults that they could bond with, which is a really good thing. And this mo, model also supports the students in making that transition from the elementary school into the junior high where they will have seven teachers. So that's what we want to implement at FMC.
Hi, my name is Maria Hadley, I am a second grade teacher at the HES campus. At our campus, the committee decided to make a recommendation to have self-contained classrooms. We felt that for the very youngest students in our district, it would be a more nurturing and stable environment for those children first coming to school and the very young ones, creating a sense of community in each classroom. So our recommendation is that at grades K through two, we have self-contained classrooms. I'm also speaking about the plan for merging the two programs and looking at the survey results, the overwhelming percentage of respondents, 60%, felt that we should make the transition in, in the course of one year. So by next year, we would merge the two programs and move forward as one school. If you broke out the results, over 80% of the parents in the blended program would like to see that transition happen within a year. And the teachers, 76% of the teachers felt that it would be great to make that transition in one year. The results were a little bit lower in the charter school respondents, or the, I'm sorry, not the charter school, that's wrong, English-speaking parents responded that about 41% of them would like to see the transition in one year and 60% of them felt that it could be phased in over a period of years. And I'm sorry, I misspoke, the Spanish-speaking parents responded at 81% wanting the transition to happen within a year.
Good evening, Jeff Rainey, Principal, HES campus. So we're talking about implementation and professional development planning, and of course, parent-community outreach and information sharing. So we understand the importance of being fully prepared for any level of transition that's to happen. This includes a strong focus on professional development and of course, community outreach. Project-based learning, small group instruction, paraprofessional support for the teacher, and I will add for the person taking the position of paraprofessional. Spanish language instruction, all of those things rose very quickly to the top during this process. I will add, as a district, as you all understand and know, the importance of building upon and supporting our English language learners through the, through a robust English language development program. This work has already begun through the external evaluation and we understand that this is going to be and maintain a positive, very strong focus on this as we move through this process. Parent and community outreach, once a recommendation has been solidified, parent outreach will be an important next step alongside many of the other ones that we will need to take. This will include communicating to families of incoming students, families of current students, and the community as a whole.
So I'm just gonna wrap up with a thank you. A lot of members of the design team are in the audience, and so I just want to acknowledge them as well as those who are standing up with me. We know that we're, we're providing the framework, the what, you know, that's what the vision of, of the community has again, received through the many opportunities for stakeholder input that we had in front of us. And we know that the next steps, as, as Principal Rainey outlined, are gonna be the, the how we do all of this. There's a lot of work still of the design team to do in that process, but, but more so, the district and the staff to really come together to say what, how this is gonna work. But we're, we are really excited about this proposal and the recommendation that we move forward in next school year.
I just want to add to what Jeff said about ELD, the, the external evaluator, Chris Nichols, is gonna be in district next week, Tuesday, all week, observing classes, talking with parents, talking with students, talking with staff. And we will get an, you know, an assessment of where we are and with recommendations shortly thereafter. Again, this was supposed to happen in November, but with the fires, it was, it was, it had to be delayed. So it's not ideal timing, but, but we know that is coming and so that's, but they haven't talked a lot about it because we have this evaluator coming, so.
Before you leave, could you ask all the members of the design committee that are here, would you please stand up?
We'll take all questions later, or do you want to ask anything now?
Public comment first. I think we'll go ahead and do public comment, we'll get a bunch of information out on, in front of us and then continue from there. So we have a lot, I will, I should have said this at the beginning of the meeting, the public can ask questions relevant to agenda items while they're under consideration, so this topic at this time. If you are going to make a comment, please identify yourself, tell us your name, and if you haven't already, you'll need to fill out one of these cards and drop it off with us up here.
Donna, do we want to remind the limit to three minutes and I'll be working the, the lighting situation over there?
Exactly, just to keep the, to keep the meeting moving along at a good clip, we're gonna limit comments to three minutes. So green is go, yellow is 30 seconds left?
Yes.
Debbie, yellow is 30 seconds left or one minute left?
I think it's 15 seconds.
15 seconds left.
15 seconds for yellow.
Don't panic, and then red is, time is up, wrap it. And if I interrupt you, please don't take it personally, we're just keeping things moving along. Okay, the first public comment is Elena Halverson.
Hi, my name is Elena Halverson, I was a member of the design team, it was an honor. It's also been an honor, I have three children, two are in the school district currently. I have also the honor of being on the HES Site Council and am the Equity Task Force Team, which has really shaped how I feel about the merging of our two schools into one. I also have the experience of one child in HES and one child at the charter, and have had really positive experiences in both programs. So I wanted to, I guess mainly since I feel like the charter program in general, as with project-based learning, has lots of support, there are a few elements that the team included from the HES model that I'd like to kind of be in support of. One is the specialist model, which my daughter experienced at FMC. Not only did she get to have two really exceptional teachers who were folk, laser-focused on their, the subjects that they were get, they were teaching, she also had the opportunity in that model to be pretty much exclusively in small group instruction with a paraprofessional. And I really felt like I could go to her teachers, either one at any time, and they knew exactly where she was. They accelerated her when she needed it and pushed her back, I felt like the sky was the limit for her, which I really appreciated. And the other one is the implementation for next year. I know that change is really, really hard and it's very scary for a lot of parents, especially if you have kids that are in the upper elementary, thinking that it's gonna change. I just, when we moved to the district in first grade, we moved from a district where my daughter had nine home languages in her kindergarten class. And my first day, my husband and I turned and said, "What is happening? This is crazy." And I just can't imagine letting it continue any longer. There is a group of students and parents who, it's just not fair to do it. So I think, and along with the support of the teachers, the teachers overwhelmingly want it to happen in one year, and I think if they feel like they can do it, I think we need to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Emily Podalak is next.
Hi, my name is Emily Podalak. I am a member of the Elementary Design Team and a parent of a current kindergartner. Throughout this process and through personal conversations with other parents, I want to express to you the overwhelming support for the two charter curriculum components, project-based learning and Spanish instruction. I do believe that they are a couple of the main reasons why enrollment was so much higher for the charter program. My request is that these components not only be maintained, but strengthened in the school merger. A strong PBL program and Spanish curriculum will make HES unique to other schools in the area and attract parents to enroll their children at HES. On a personal note, as a parent of a current kindergartner, I have to comment on how last May, getting the very last-minute decision to merge the kindergarten program was very frustrating as a parent and seemed to be very unprofessional. We never received a letter of the change and we were never informed on the curriculum plans for the fall. This was disconcerting as a parent, enrolling my child in the program, my first child in the program, and just not knowing what to expect. So I just ask, moving forward, that whatever decisions are made, that communication to parents is made in a timely and professional manner, because I do think that what we have proposed is exciting and that parents should be looking forward to it, but they need preparation in order to understand what's happening. With that said, we have had a fabulous year in kindergarten, my son loves his school. The project-based learning has been maintained, he is receiving Spanish instruction, and I want to thank the district for upholding their commitment to 18 kids per class with a paraprofessional. I volunteer in the classroom on a weekly basis and I can see that it makes a huge difference, not only to have the paraprofessional for extra hands for a kindergartner, for all the things that kindergartners are learning, but also with the instructional model of the small, center-based learning. So I just want to propose that the district should continue to maintain this commitment to all incoming kindergarten families, to maintain the small class size of 18 students or less and a paraprofessional, and continue the small class size moving forward and paraprofessionals in all classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta Messix.
Muy buenas noches, soy Greta, soy la bibliotecaria de HES, y tengo tres puntos. Primero quiero agradecerlos al equipo de Elementary Design Team. Muy buen trabajo, hicieron muy buen trabajo, y la manera en que la información nos ha sido comunicado era excelente. Por mi parte, era muy fácil leer, entender los deseos de nuestras familias, nuestros empleados y nuestra comunidad. Quiero también notar que sin el trabajo de nuestra coordinadora de padres y comunicación hubiera sido mucho más difícil de tener tanta información de parte de nuestras familias. Gracias a Alma Díaz en especial.
Thanks, Alma, good work.
So first, my first point is I want to say thanks to the Elementary Design Team, really did a great job, and it was really well communicated, very, very clear what parents wanted, what employees wanted, what our community wanted. And I think that without Alma Díaz, we wouldn't have gotten as full a level of communication, especially with our Spanish-speaking parents, and that's a big deal. Muchas gracias. Segundo, quiero decir que estoy completamente de acuerdo con las sugerencias de este equipo. Tengo mucho respeto para los que trabajaron en el equipo y han decidido una dirección para nuestra escuela, que es precisamente lo que necesitamos nosotros. Tercero, so second, I really agree with everything that the design team has said and all the suggestions, and I think it's exactly what our school needs. Finally, third, tercero, como bibliotecaria en la escuela HES, estoy en una posición de conocer y platicar con todos nuestros estudiantes, todos nuestros empleados, maestros, y con muchas de nuestras familias. de nuestras familias. Lo que veo es que ya estamos en el camino de ser una sola escuela. Nuestros chiquillos anden enfrente de nosotros y no los podemos parar. So, um, third, as the librarian at HES, I'm in a really good position to chat with everybody, parents, um, students every day, family members, a lot of family members. And this is what I see, that we're already on the way to being one school. Our students are running way ahead of us. Just try and stop them. We're there. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you, Greta.
Hey Greta, gracias por darle un descanso, I'll interpret that.
Uh, next, Emily Peterson.
Good evening, I'm Emily Peterson. I'm one of the kindergarten teachers and I just wanted to share my experience this school year as we were kind of the first, I guess, to merge our two schools. And so I was with Healdsburg Charter School, and this is my first year that I'm with Healdsburg Elementary School. And within my classroom, there hasn't really been much change at all. We also are already following a lot of what the design team is proposing. We still have the same curriculum, we're doing project-based learning throughout the four classes, we're doing our field studies, we have Spanish instruction. We're very thankful for our para supports this year. But what I feel is very, um, different and enlightening and just feels right is that all the classes are finally going on field trips together. And we were already, the kids didn't really know the difference, but I definitely have always felt it, um, that the, just the charter kids on one side of the wing were leaving on field studies and they were doing other activities than the Healdsburg Elementary School, um, classes. And so it feels right that all our kids, they play together, they have recess together, they have lunch together, with even the community in the school didn't know before that HCS or HES do engage in that way and our kids do, and they don't know the difference. But it is just, it's easy, it's an easy merge in the kindergarten wing and it feels right that we're including everybody and that everyone's having the same services and academic success and experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Fox.
Hello again, my name is Holly Fox. I've already spoken to you as a member of the Elementary School Design Committee and I also wanted to add a few comments as a mother of a student at HES and as a community member. So my child was lucky enough to be a part of this year's combined kindergarten program, which was combined for the first time in many years, and we've had a wonderful experience. My son is well-connected with his teacher, his classroom aide, and his classmates, and he's learning all the things that kindergartners learn these days. I would encourage you to ask the current kindergarten teachers about what is working and where they need more support. And I'm so pleased that Emily Peterson was able to share a little bit about her experience here tonight. My last request, and I know I echo others when I say this, is to make sure that we have an effective and just English language development curriculum in place before the new year begins. As we bring children together who have historically been separated, it's imperative that the ELD curriculum not resegregate our students or exacerbate other inequities. Our Spanish-speaking students arrive at our schools with the opportunity to be truly bilingual and bilingual in ways that I can only envy for my own children. Let's not squander that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia? One, one more? Yeah, okay, yeah. Oh, hi.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sylvia. Creo que ya la mayoría dijo todo. Estoy completamente de acuerdo.
Oh, yeah, she.
Este, estoy completamente de acuerdo con ellas. Nada más que a mí me gustaría darles la opinión personal, mis niños empezaron el kinder en la HES regular.
I just wanted to share, I've been, I'm in agreement with everything they've all said so far, but I wanted to share a little bit about my personal experiences. My children started in the regular school in kindergarten.
Primer grado también.
And also in first grade.
Y en el segundo grado que fueron reclasificados, los pasé al charter.
And in the second year when they were reclassified, I moved them to the charter school.
Y ellos estaban muy emocionados de ver la diferencia de cómo era la enseñanza.
They were very excited once they realized what a difference in the teaching there was in the charter school.
Entonces, yo estaba de voluntaria en ambos lados cuando estaban en primer grado y en tercer grado, segundo grado en el charter.
So I served as a volunteer both at the regular school and in the charter school for first grade and second and third grade.
Y podía ver la diferencia de lo que es los proyectos de PBL, toda esta forma de enseñanza y la de la regular. Y siempre pensé, yo quisiera lo mismo para ambos grupos, para los de la HES y para el charter. Siempre fue mi sueño este proyecto, entonces estoy muy contenta de que ya lo estamos llevando a cabo.
So I got to see the difference between the regular education and the project-based learning, and I always thought, oh, I wish they both had it on both sides, so I'm really excited to see that that's happening now.
Me gustaría que, que fuera este, el año que viene, lo más pronto que pueda, para poder ver la diferencia en mis hijos también, porque pasarían a quinto grado. Entonces si, si es pronto, les va, puedo ver el resultado de este programa.
I really hope that this does happen in the next year and that way I can see the difference in my own kids. I'll be able to see the results of them having this project-based learning, so I really hope it happens in the next year.
Pienso que las maestras están bien capacitadas ambas para poderlo llevar en este año que viene.
I think teachers from both campuses are already fully prepared to be able to do this in the coming year.
Sería todo, muchas gracias.
That's it, thank you.
Gracias Sylvia.
Vicki Nobles.
Good evening, my name is Vicki Nobles. Just by way of history, I am the mom of a current kindergartner. I also have a three-year-old who's in the Community Center preschool program, which, just on a side note, would love to have you guys pay attention to the city council meeting that happened about six months ago on that topic. There's a lot of good information. Anyway, um, so just, my husband is born and raised Healdsburg. I've been here about 12 years. His family has been in this community for 40 years. He went through the school program, so we're big supporters of the elementary school program. I want to start by saying I am in complete agreement with everything that's been presented this eve, excuse me, this evening, specifically project-based learning, the Spanish in the classrooms, the small classroom size, and the paraprofessionals. All of those things are the reason that we chose to stay in district and not leave with a lot of our colleague, current friends who did choose to go outside of district. So with that said, one of the things that I heard that I would like to challenge would be how to get the class sizes to continue to be smaller in the upper elementary school elements, um, adding more teachers or what other explorations could be available to make sure that that smaller 20 or under class size does continue because it really has been valuable so far. Moving on from that, I do want to echo a couple of other folks who said that the communication on the change that happened earlier this year was abysmal. To say that I'm fired up about this lack of communication is an understatement. There are many people behind me that know this has been a soapbox, soapbox issue for me since the spring. We chose this program for the reasons that I said. When you guys, the district made the change, there was absolutely zero efficient communication to parents. We got a phone call that was left on a voicemail that was 30 seconds long, done conveniently two days before an article appeared about this very topic in the newspaper. From that point, there was zero further communication to kindergarten parents about how this change would directly affect them. We are in the process of handing our children to you for the first time ever, and you failed to give us the support that we needed. The only time I got an answer was after stalking the district and the elementary school for two weeks prior to school starting. Jeff Rainey had the joy of hearing from me on his first day of work. And I will commend you, by the way, you haven't run from me since, so thank you. But I, again, the, the communication was unclear, it was poorly defined, it certainly did not engender trust, which is what this transition, especially in the relationship between parents and administrators should be about. And I think that you let not only us down, but the rest of the community. And so with this fantastic new program that we're talking about implementing, I challenge you all to think strongly and very, very, in, much in detail about how you communicate this to the parents, because you missed the mark last time. So get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose McAllister.
Hi, everyone. Um, nice to see you. I'm Rose McAllister and I have two kids in the charter school and one kindergartner in HES. I'm also the president of the governing, the charter governing council, and I've been in, very involved in this whole process. And, um, I feel like it's evolved in an interesting way, and I was thinking actually as we were hearing the presentation, that when I filled out my, um, when I filled out my survey, I said I thought it should be a two-to-three-year transition, but I think that had entirely to do with feeling that we needed to be ready, that teachers needed to be ready, paras needed to be ready, programming needed to be in place, curriculum needed to be clearly defined and communicated, and that's something that would potentially take longer than a year. And I really feel like the conversations that have gone on in the last month or so have really convinced me that, you know, if the teachers feel ready, for the most part, and we're moving forward with specifics, then that's good and that addresses concerns. And I would imagine I'm not the only person who feels that way. I really want to say that I, I appreciate all the hard work that everyone put into this and that I, for the most part, agree with these six items being, you know, my personal feeling is that they're the most important ones. But I, I have concerns about the small groups if paras, instructional paras, aren't also a piece. Because I have watched in classrooms as, you know, if you have three groups, especially in the larger classes, my son, my daughter's in a class with 28 students, that one of those rotations is being run by the teacher, there's not a para, so the kids are working independently in the other rotation. And then in the third rotation, they're on a device. And there's no adult for the children to reach out to, other than the teacher who's in the middle of teaching or rotation. And so I just think it's this very practical example of how, if you don't have the piece of a para or an additional adult in the room, which formerly that was a volunteer parent often. So without those pieces, and I know there's big dollars that are attached to having those pieces at all times, I just don't know that, I think it practically works as well as it should. And, yeah, so I just want to emphasize that. And then I also have a little bit of concern about the specialist model, especially in the transition from second to third grade, because I have seen with my own children that that is a difficult transition with a lot of things that they have to acclimate to. And I just feel like it would be good to examine whether adding an additional point to that transition, it works. And I know that's a decision for the administrators and the teacher to make. And I know my time's up, but I just, I just want to say that I feel like one of the most important pieces of this transition is that administrators and the board are aware of the practical aspects of this transition. Maybe spend some time in the classrooms, talk to the teachers, really be involved with what does this all look like and, and how do these big decisions impact the actual classrooms, students, teachers, parents, and so on, um, you know, from the small chairs? So, thanks.
Thank you, Rose. Jenny Levine Smith.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jenny Levine Smith. I live in Healdsburg. I'm an educator. I focus on equity and inclusion in the classroom and in schools, and I am part of the Healdsburg Equity Initiative. I'm mostly here to say this is wonderful, I'm really excited about the work that's been done, I want to congratulate the team. I think you did an amazing job capturing the voices of the community as a whole. And it really seems obvious from the work that you've done that this is the right decision to make. I want to piggyback on what Holly said, also I agree with just about everything that's been said so far, so second to all of that. I want to piggyback on what Holly said a few minutes ago about ELD and about, I know that that's not, that coming up with the ELD program is not a part of this team, but it is part of having a good ELD program as part of the plan, and I know that that's coming up with the assessment. And I just urge you to be so, so, so thoughtful and intentional about what gets chosen, how it gets implemented, as Holly said, so that it doesn't resegregate kids and, and so that it doesn't reinstate sort of different versions of education for kids from different primary language home groups. It also brings up a concern that I have about the process coming forward, and I'm glad that I can talk to you about it now, because I know that the process is really just starting. I think one of the things that made this team so successful was how many parent voices were a part of it, right? That like, our families are, are team, you know, the family, school, and children is one unit, right? And they have to be on the same team and their voices matter. I know that going forward, there's this, you know, external assessment, you have an expert coming in to really look at the, um, at the ELD program and what should happen next. I know from talking with a bunch of parents who aren't able to be here tonight, that they feel like they have had to, and these are parents who are primary home language, Spanish, and so their children are in the ELD program, they felt like they've really had to push and push and push and push and push to have any kind of a say and any kind of voice in this process. And I find that really concerning. And I think what, again, what's so amazing is that on this team and the other team, you have all of this parent voice, so I know that the district appreciates how important parent voice is in some of these fundamental decisions of the school. And I really urge the board and urge the superintendent to seek out parents of students who are classified as English language learners, who have been, maybe who are now ARFEP, of older students who are in the program, to really see what their experience has been over the last many years in accelerated English, in the change this year to smaller amounts of time, but still the accelerated English strategies, what that's done to them, for them, to their relationships with our families, et cetera, and what they want for themselves, for their children, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mandy Carpenter.
Hi, I'm Mandy Carpenter, and we've had the pleasure, we have a second grader and also a fifth grader, so we've had the pleasure of being at both campuses. And both of our children are charter, and we specifically chose charter based on the PBL presentation. I wanted to thank, oh my gosh, I wanted to thank the equity team and the, um, the design team. I think it's a reflection of the community and where the community wants to be and the direction that we're heading. I also want to thank the kindergarten teachers, because they really kind of took this, the bull by the horns, and, you know, in terms of notice and what some parents are conveying of no notice, I don't know that the kinder teachers probably got the same amount of notice. So I'm here as a parent and as a member of the community to really support the project-based learning. I think it results in creating an inclusive environment, and it also inertly offers different learning styles for the children, because they all learn differently, and I think that's something that PBL, it's an understatement to say that it does. In terms of professional development, I do have a few questions on that, and my, my main question is when will this professional development happen? I, like Rose, I, I would echo that, you know, initially I thought, hey, this has got to take longer. We, we got to do this right, it can't be a knee-jerk response, because we're just going to put the pendulum in the wrong direction when we're trying to get to our measurable goals. I'm excited that, I mean, we're, obviously, it sounds like we're closer than what, what we wanted to be, or originally intending. That said, one of my concerns as a parent is will it take extra days away from the current instruction that our kids are receiving with having substitutes in? I know that there's a substitute shortage, and even with the best substitute teachers, they are trying to manage a class for the day, they are not coming towards the goals of where those teachers need to be. And we're asking extra of the teachers with this new development and to become together as a team, so I want to make sure that they have enough time available to them and that it doesn't hinder our students and our, our families. In terms of professional development, where does that also place our paraprofessionals? So I know that we keep talking about the teachers, and one of my concerns And one of my concerns as a parent is will the para professionals also have this proper training? And what does that look like? What does that timeline look like? And are we designating the para professionals to the specific goals of the classroom? Or are they simply there for behavior management of one or two students? That is a difference. That's called a babysitter. They are not helping the measurable goals of that classroom or that teacher. So, and my commitment, um, to the smaller class sizes, I do want to thank you. I think it is seen. I've helped in the kinder classes. I've helped in other classes throughout the year. And I think, um, especially this time when we're going to probably be getting a lot more English as second language learners in the classrooms, I, I want to echo the importance of that. And, um, thank you for your support on that.
You're at time.
Yeah, we're at time.
Okay, so I'm going to come in as Mandy Michelle Carpenter now because I have more to say. So, um, I want to also implore the idea, just quickly. Um, I know that obviously funding can be an issue. But have we looked at enlisting some of the amazing volunteers outside of our, outside of our school district? We have amazing members of our community who would like to help. How are we outreach to them? They see things in the PD, they see things in the Tribune. They want to help. They don't know where to hopscotch in. So we need to try to figure out a leg and an arm of saying, hey, Mike, would you like to help? We actually have some things. What talents do you have? How can we keep them coming on a, on a time basis like that? So thank you for your time and we look forward to seeing how next year looks.
Thank you. So.
Do we have one more public comment? Are you bringing one up? You are the last one, yes.
Just stay right up here.
Just in.
Perfect timing.
Team Board of Trustees, my name is Anna Lugo. It's great to see some of you. I know we met right before you guys make the decisions around A through G. Um, I am a leader in the Latino community. I am, I want to make clear, I'm not here to speak on behalf of anyone, but to encourage that we listen to the voices of, um, the demographic that makes up, um, the highest percentage in your district. Um, pro, as they say, the devil is in the details, right? And my expertise is in equity and diversity. I do diversity strategy and equity strategy for my clients. And so is equity. Equity is in the details and in the process, right? And making sure that we are engaging our community members in minority populations in a way that's culturally responsive and culturally sensitive. Um, and speaking to them in a language that makes them feel, both feel honored and respected. And I was rather inspired by the parents who talked about and, uh, and demanded that you, um, be better in your communication with parents. And I echo that for the Latino community, right? And so I think that you have a minority majority district at this point. And it is absolutely critical that the school and the, the schools in the district be culturally responsive to that. So how we teach, the way we engage with our parents, the way we engage with our students must change and must evolve to reflect the community that we encompass today. Um, there is such a thing as a dominant culture. There is such a thing as unconscious bias, right? And so really making sure that we are training and developing our staff so that they're conscious of that. And I know that you must know that there's much research now around the way in which our unconscious bias play out in the classrooms and in the way we interact with parents. Making sure that we keep their agency intact and are able to allow them to make decisions for their students is critical. Thank you so much. And I fully support and urge you to take it up one step and really become culturally responsive in your district. Have a great night.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to our discussion of the elementary school configuration.
Did you have any questions for the team, the design team, before we jump into board discussion?
Okay.
Erica, do you mind coming back up?
But I have to get all this back up.
Question?
Just a minute. I'm getting, I'm getting it up.
Breathe.
While you're doing that, I, I would just, um, unequivocally praise the team, uh, the leaders, and particularly Principal McGuire. This is an awesome job. Uh, you're just beginning. I hope you know that. But, um, I am so terribly impressed. Thank you.
So, um, I also want to say I'm very impressed with the work that you've done. I do have a couple of questions and a comment. I really appreciated getting all of the town hall comments in alphabetical order.
Thanks, Jody Pruitt.
I thought that was fascinating.
Yeah. It was a good way to see, like, what rose to the top because you could just see the Ps, the PBL. You know, it was a good way to.
Absolutely. So when I was looking at the survey respondents, one of the questions I have was, you said, a certain number of staff, 36?
Mm-hmm.
Was that?
Responded.
Responded. And I'm wondering, because I don't have that data, how many of that, how many teachers are at both schools in the elementary? How many para professionals? Did you pull that apart? When you talk about staff, were you also talking about the custodial staff? I want to know.
So we sent it to all staff, so classified and certificated. Um, I'm trying to think right now because I feel like I sent out so many surveys that, um, it was name optional. Um, so we didn't want to, we wanted, uh, staff members in particular and parents too. We did the same thing where it was optional, the name. Um, and even asking for their job classification. We didn't, we wanted people to feel totally free to share what they really felt about, uh, programming. So we sent it, uh, both Jeff and I, to our all-staff email addresses, wanting input from classified and certificated both. Um, sending it multiple times and 36 was the total that we got. Um, I have 15 teachers at my side. I think Jeff has an even number, the same. So, um, so assuming we got majority of, of our teachers. And I know we had some classified as well in looking at some of the comments.
Okay, so you had a total of 36 responses. That's what I was looking at. And I wondered what the total staff population was. I'd like a percentage of how many people actually responded.
Mm-hmm. I'll have to get that because I can't, I don't know our, um, total staff numbers.
So what it, what it leads me to is, is I've been thinking about compromise a lot and, um, majority rule a lot. And, um, and it's a discussion that I've had actually with Chris to, um, and to put it in a real personal way is that I think that every teacher has, um, certain strengths about how they go about teaching. And, um, I've been a volunteer now for several years in my grandson's class and now in my other grandson's class as well. And inevitably, I'm in one of the centers. That is not a style of teaching that I was ever comfortable with. It's not the way I would approach that. And I'm just wondering, when you're talking about, um, using a station rotation model in every classroom, how much leeway teachers have to, to use their strength? I have to tell you, and I love work, I've loved working in every one of the classrooms and I usually do it in math. By the time I get the fourth group, you know, it's yawning timed for me. Which is why, one of the reasons why I never used that, that model. It wasn't, I couldn't be a secondary teacher either with just two different, uh, preps. It would drive me crazy. So I'm just wondering within this proposal, what kind of differentiation you're doing for your staff and your teachers? I think that that's, I think it's really important to, um, allow the strength of your staff to come forward and for them to feel not run by a majority rule, but by a consensus view. So I, I, that was one of the points that I wanted to make.
Can I respond quickly to that?
Yes, absolutely.
So a couple, so I was at, we were at a meeting, um, recently where the kind of concern about a small group instruction came up and a teacher answered it better than I could. And I think it's to your point of, you know, teachers have different strengths. Um, because the teacher who responded, responded that it's great because by the time you teach it the third time, you figured out all the kinks. It's like, you know, myself as a secondary teacher, by third period, I've got that lesson down, right? So for a lot of teachers, they really enjoy the opportunity to go deep and, and do. Um, and then I'll say, you know, that at, at FMC, there was never a, you know, in the blended learning, it's station rotation was a part of that model. Um, but in the charter, it was never a dictate to mandate to say, we're going to do all of our language arts and math in small group rotation. It just morphed over the last couple of years and now in every single classroom. So, and, you know, in this plan, you know, it says small group instruction. I don't foresee, and it, it's not part of my plan or Jeff's plan or any conversations to dictate the amount of time. We just believe and putting it in here that, that the idea of small group instruction and the elements of small group instruction are really valuable. Um, our teachers, I think K5 in every single classroom are using small group instruction when they find it appropriate, usually during, you know, reading centers or math. But they know that they can decide to do something whole group, uh, whether it's a math lesson or an element of science or even a reading lesson that they, a language arts lesson that they feel, and they have complete latitude and freedom to do that. Um, and they would in this situation as well.
I guess what it is, is not an objection to small group instruction. It's that how that's structured.
Mm-hmm.
So my other, my other, and this is a concern about the station rotation model. And that is the model when, the, the station when they're on screens.
Mm-hmm.
I have a real concern about the amount of time kids are on screens. And, um, I have a concern as, as a grandparent, getting kids off of screens. You know, it's a, it's a losing battle. But, but I, I really have a concern about the school than putting kids on more screen time. So I understand that there's a lot of information. I've watched the kids working on the screens and different kinds of, of math things. I'm not convinced that they can do that effectively without somebody, um, there to, to help them and monitor what's going on. I've just seen kids, you know, it, it's that same thing. Even with an, a para professional in the classroom, which I saw last year, the teacher is constantly distracted from the small group that she's teaching to monitor what's going on out there. Because kids want to play games on the screens. So those are just areas of concern that I have.
Which is why we are, um, a PO is in process to, um, we're going to try out, um, the software that they use at the high schools, at the secondary, HAPARA, where the teachers can actually, we're going to try it, try it out in fifth grade, um, where they can block what the students have access to. We haven't had that because we don't have as much of a need. Yeah, students go on and they look for different, you know, backgrounds, change their backgrounds.
Well, screw the land.
But, um, but to try to, again, for that same exact purpose. Because it came up in particular in fifth grade. So we thought we would try it out. Um, where again, the teachers can monitor and they can actually shut down so they can only go to ST Math or whatever they're working on at the time, Lexia, um, to address some of that concern. You know, I think we're also faced with, we had this conversation yesterday at the Charter Governing Council with, the district has adopted tech standards, right? So there's the expectation of the use of tech and, and, um, not only for learning, but like the current learning as third grader, but also the skills that they're going to, need to build on to be successful in the 21st century and the real world, uh, post-high school, high school and post-high.
Or actually just to have a cell phone.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, and there's also, you know, we know that, you know, families struggle at home and we, you know, have conversations about, uh, kind of what appropriate uses in the classroom. Um, I feel strongly that the decisions that we make, you know, with, uh, you know, Aaron Fender's office and with our teachers about the programs that we're using, that they are really high quality. Um, I was just, again, for a conversation at CGC, doing a lot of research. And it's, it's really hard to find, aside from, you know, pediatricians saying two hours a day is like, you know, good screen time. That's all screen time. But really, most of the research says that it's just about good programming, whether it's a good video game, it's educational, or mindless TV. And so we really feel that the tech that we have our students using is high quality. And I understand what you're saying as, as well, Trustee Velazquez, about, um, you know, needing teacher support. And it is important that teachers monitor, not just that they're on the right screen, but their progress to see, you know, in ST Math or Lexia, you can see if they're stuck on something. And that is an important component to the teacher's job to look at where they're stuck and help them.
So I don't, I've, I'm aware of the quality of the programs. I've watched that. It's the amount of screen time that I have a concern about. It's not the quali, I know that you've put a lot of effort into. It's that they go on a screen in ELA and then they go on a screen in their sem-class, in their small group. And that's 40 minutes a day, right there. I think that's a lot. So, uh, as usual, I think I'm probably an outlier in all of this. But I, I really, I have a real concern about the amount of time that kids are on screens, no matter what the quality of the program is. Um, so I just wanted to raise that. But I really, um, I loved hearing about, and I've seen what's going on in the kindergarten class because of my second grandson. And, uh, it's very, very exciting. So, thanks. I don't have any other questions.
I, I have a quick question. And, um, am I correct that, um, you didn't really go out, the, the group, did not go out to, uh, research, bring in a lot of, uh, papers, go out and make visitations? So this is basically what we know. And I acknowledge that, you know, years ago, we knew this. Now we know this and there's no question.
Right.
So basically, what, the committee was working within this framework?
Yes.
Okay.
We just, I mean, just, yeah, we did, we did not go out and do what has been done in the past as part of, I think the implementation of the, you know, what we, our blended learning model was really a part, was, was looking at the wider, you know, lots of, um, visits to schools to see what we were going to implement. And so I think we felt like we had two really strong instructional models. Um, and so that's what we used as our frame of reference to kind of gather input and develop this on.
Okay.
I do have one more question. Maybe it's, maybe it's for the admin team, um, and not just, um, Principal McGuire. But, um, in terms of, so there are a few comments made in the public, um, comment section about being culturally responsive and, and thinking about our ELD and having that consultant. Um, I'm excited that I'm going to be able to get to have that interview session with her. But I don't know who's being interviewed. And I'm really hoping that we're having parent voice in there. I know they're not decision makers, but they should be, um, part of the conversation. You know, the whole LCAP process now, there's this, um, engagement, the stakeholder engagement piece, that's very, um, a focal point right now at the state level because, you know.
We do have a parent focus group set up for Tuesday evening. And, um, our parent outreach coordinators have been helping us set that up. So Tuesday evening, she's going to have one chance. And she'll be here for these four days. We'll see what happens. If she feels like she has enough information, there may be follow-up, um, phone calls or other inquiries.
Okay, great. I want to make sure.
It'll be one element, uh, along the four days. But we do have one session set up with.
And then the other piece is the students, right? I mean, when we talk about, um, you know, I'm hoping that we're talking to ARFEP students and.
Yeah, there's three focus groups at each site. And there'll be representation, both of ARFEP's, um, long-term ELs, current ELs. So one at Fitch, one at the junior high and one at the high school.
So happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so just a reminder, we're not deciding this tonight. We wouldn't do that to you, put you on the spot right away. Um, but this is a chance for, um, the board to discuss. And I wanted to structure it. I talked with, uh, President Del Rey. Um, we thought we could start with, um, positives, things you're excited about, and then look at things that could be potential obstacles where there's concerns. And then finally, is there areas where you feel like you need more information? Questions answered. Again, I want to lead into the discussion with, we're really just talking about the what. As Erica talked about, there will be a lot of work into the details of the how. But before we engage our staff into building a program, we really need to know what you all are going to say that we can do. So, um, I know there's going to be a little bit of question and frustration perhaps around the details. But we're not going to engage in a lot of depth, deep work until we know the direction we're headed, right? So I don't, I didn't want to waste staff time on something like that. So, um, we're in the what? So let's start with positives, uh, strengths to the proposals.
I'll start. I'll start. You know, when I first became a board member, I actually hadn't been sworn in yet, but I came to a board meeting, and there was a beautiful presentation from a kindergarten class from the charter school. And they had done this project-based learning around the election. And it was just beautifully done, and it, I walked out of here with a heavy heart. I mean, I just, my heart ached because in that video, we didn't have representation of our Latino community. And I also knew that they weren't getting those experiences through the AE program. So it was heartbreaking to me. I just want to thank Emily for stating today that what's happening today feels right because it is right. We're giving all students opportunity. We talked about, we had a ready presentation where we talked about the opportunity gap. It's not an, it's not an achievement gap, it's an opportunity gap. And we are now providing opportunities for all students to learn in a rich environment, and that just warms my heart. I mean, I can't tell you how grateful I am for that, but I'm going to emotional. But it's just, I'm so proud of the work that's been done. And I just, I'm really excited about one school, one community. I just think about the amazing opportunity we have to really pull our resources and really create rich learning for both the adults and students, you know, having a common focus on project-based learning and inquiry-based, and how that's really going to support the portrait of a graduate. That work of combining and having, you know, this rich learning is going to meet that need of creating these graduates that are going to be successful citizens in our community. And so I just, I want to commend this community, and I want to commend the leadership for putting this process into place and to, for really tackling this really difficult conversation. And I'm just so proud right now. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
I think just looking, sorry to have much of a voice. I think just looking at what the design team has proposed, I'm in full support. I don't, there are no large red flags. I don't think there's big gaps. Like you said, this is the word to give you direction on, we think you're headed in the right direction taking this forward. So I'm, I'm in support of what, of what work we've seen tonight. So if you're asking for direction and overall comments and positives, I'm, I'm all in on all of it.
Not my nature to be so positive. But I, I can't find, I mean, I can find it little, little pieces that I go, well, what about this? And I can bring them up if you're interested. But PBL, Spanish instruction, enrichment. And I look at that, and I actually had a conversation with somebody today at the mentor luncheon about enrichment, and this is an artist in our community, and I won't get into all of that. But what an opportunity. And I know we do some enrichment. But to bring this into our classroom, art, music, dance, movement, theater, that becomes part of the curriculum and supplements, and how do you tell the story of, my mind is going crazy, fourth grade history, California, you can reenact that. Or the songs, or whatever it may be, I am so thrilled that that is here. I cannot tell you, as well as the others. The paraprofessional supporter, absolutely support, who said, we need to make sure that they have professional development. And I'll talk about that in a second, because they are an integral part of the instructional program. Small group instruction, I think is great. Class size, I have a problem with it. And I'm looking, Superintendent, does what I'm going to say. In the late 90s, California did CSR class size reduction, K three at least, 20 to one. I think that should be our goal, and Chris is going to go, you know, he's going to pull out his revolver. And I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think it's bad at looking at 20 to one in fourth and fifth grade as well. We, if, when we build this program, when y'all build this program, when we all build this program, it could be outstanding. I've had the conversation with several people about, this is not about combining schools. This is about building the dream school. This is a design team to design. Now, we've got great things going on in the school. And so we pull those together, and we can continue to look and say, what else is out there that would make this school, our school, your school, the best school? I don't care about Sonoma, best school in the state. Let's just be the best that we can be for our kids. I don't care about anybody else, about our kids. I'm stoked, I can't wait to see it, what's going on. And I will finish with the PD. Professional development is absolute, absolutely, if I can talk, absolutely critical. Absolutely critical. I mean, deep down, what do we need to know? What do our teachers need to know? I know there's a concern about pulling teachers, so that's a good point. But professional development, I don't care when it is, where it is, how it is, I don't, again, I'll look at the CFO now. I don't care how much it costs, all right? But we have to make sure that our professionals and our paraprofessionals are up to date and even better than the others out there. So whatever it takes, and, and I encourage our administration to get into the classroom and say, what else is it that you need? You know, let me look, look at you, how you're doing that. I'm not sure, and I'm not an expert in this, let me get the expert to come and help you. So that's the way I look at professional development. I am, you know, I'm a surfer, I'm stoked. This is great.
So I guess I'm next. I'm very, I'm very excited about the real strong emphasis on project-based learning. I think that it's, I really like the kind of instruction that's been taking place in that. I really like the fact that at Fitch Mountain, which is what I'm more aware of, that the classes are combined in the PBL instruction now, and thank you Erica for that, and for your teachers for doing that. It's pretty exciting to, to see that combination going on. I'm very excited about a strong Spanish instruction program. And I think that it's been an improvement this year, but, but the time is a concern to me because right now, at, at Fitch Mountain, I think they get two, two times a week for 40 minutes. And I'm, I'm not convinced that that gets them whatever this design is asking for. So I look at, I look at this, and I'm very excited about, about moving in this direction and incorporating these elements. And you don't have a long enough school day.
Yeah.
So I don't know how, I don't know how you're going to do it, and I, I don't know how you do it without frying your teachers. So I think that, I think to do it, what Mike's talking about is a big price tag.
So I'll build on that. In agreement with pretty much everything that's been said, I really am heartened by the fact that I'm hearing directly from teachers that we're ready for this, we're, we're, we're ready. This isn't something that needs to take two or three years, that I'm not trying to minimize the PD that's needed. We definitely need to do the right kind of PD across the board for paras and everybody, but that people are ready, you know, emotionally and, and technically. So that, that feels great. I, I think we have a lot of details to work out, I don't have to tell you, from screen time to how we are going to work in Spanish language, how, I mean, you're right, there are only so many hours in the day. We can only ask teachers to do, you know, give of themselves so much. So that, it's going to be a challenge, a big challenge. But again, a lot of, a lot of details to still work out. I, I really kind of like this dream school idea. And I actually, it's funny, in thinking about this, I, I almost think this is an opportunity to look at calling our elementary program, Healdsburg Elementary School, and then our two campuses, a Fitch Mountain campus and like a North Street campus. Because remember, they really were two schools. Now they're one continual elementary program. And I don't, I don't know, it always feels funny that it's like Fitch Mountain and Healdsburg Elementary. Well, they're all Healdsburg Elementary, but they're just two different campuses with the kids moving through.
Very confusing, yeah.
So, but I do, I've been thinking about, I mean, it's, it's just new ways of looking at like, what is our dream for this? Let's figure out what we want to do, and then we, we look at what it costs and we back out, how do we get this done? And do we raise money? Do we, you know, what do we, what do we have in the budget? How do we make this work? But that's always the way to do it, to start with the vision and the dream, and then make, you know, take the steps to get there.
If I might, I might be, and correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, I know you will. I think what he was saying is, this is really a starting point, right? We can build out most of what's out there, but, but it's a beginning. And let's continue, continue to dream and continue to build as we go on, so.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Let me not correct you, but if I may just.
Yeah, please.
Respond to him. I mean, my vision is, what's the vision? What's the vision in five years? What is the dream school? What is the perfect school? I know we have to, we're moving toward this next year, it's a big step. But what is that, let us keep dreaming, not let's just say, okay, we've got the, okay, we did it, because we haven't done it yet, until every kid is successful. And so what does that take? What is the dream school? I like that. We can call it Healdsburg Dream School.
There's a really cool school in Bali I'd like to go visit.
Ah, okay.
Called the Green School.
Yeah, we all need to do that, yeah.
I think we probably should.
It's called the Green School, look it up on the website in Bali and New Zealand, that's where they're at.
One thing I will, I mean, I know we haven't quite gotten to challenges yet, but I, I'm hearing very loud and clear about communication. And I, yeah, yeah, that we need to do better. We, I mean, as a district, as a board, as everything about what's happening and when it's happening, and making sure all the right parties are involved, so.
Alex, did you have anything you want? You were on the Equity Task Force?
My long history of being on the trustee board serves me well. I was on the Equity Task Force, that was a huge blast, and I like the term I promise school more than dream school. And I think we'll get major funding for that name. But I'm really upset that I won't be able to see these lasting effects, since we are talking about a long-term change that's going to be seen over the next five to 10 years as I'll be away, and hopefully I won't have any kids yet to send to Healdsburg. But, but these changes are major, and I definitely agree that a price, it comes with a huge price tag, but I think it's worth it. The education that they will be receiving will be better guided to 21st century workforce, and that's what education should be about, about entering the work field in any field, but still being prepared for the real world. And I think that a change to a one-school system will better educate all students.
We do need diverse male elementary teachers.
Yeah.
Just saying.
And you can absolutely come back and visit, so, yeah. Thank you, Alex. So, yeah. And no kids.
I promise.
Can we move on then to obstacles? Obviously, we've talked about price tag. At first, first glance, we've kind of, it's on my whiteboard in my office. We're, we're looking at about $380,000 to $420,000 to hire extra Spanish teacher, extra paraprofessionals. There is a hit to the budget by not having a charter. You get a little bit of extra money for charter students. So that's a cursory look, there's more, more analysis to be made. I think professional development, we have a lot of professional development in the district. I do think that it'll simply be a shift of how we spend on professional development. But certainly, as we dream big, or promise big, we, we will have increased costs, and that's something to take into consideration. But other, other concerns or obstacles that you all see?
Just a quick question. If we choose to implement the, a one-school policy over a set interval of time, instead of just one year, how would that look like?
It's a good question. I mean, we could have done it, and I would actually posit that we're actually doing it over two years if we do it all next year, because we did kindergarten this year, right? So the, if we were to do it over a multi-year, and taking a multi-year approach, you know, we could make it up as you go. It might be you do all of HES in one year, and then Fitch the next year, it could be longer. But again, the recommendation from the team was to do everybody for next year, so.
Again, for challenges, I think just the time in a school day is going to be one of our biggest challenges around as much as we want to do, English language development, Spanish, you know, all the, everything else. I think that's going to definitely be a challenge, and something we'll need to continue to communicate to the task force. You know, we, this just needs to be a, a process of communication and fine-tuning and adjusting.
Right.
I, I guess I would say, I've, I have a lot of confidence knowing that there were a number of teachers, administrators, they're the ones that have developed this plan. So for me to sit here and say, well, it's going to be expensive, there's only so, it's only so many hours in the day, I, I guess I don't really have those concerns because the folks that are going to be implementing this wonderful program are the ones that have spoken. And so I think, really, I sit here thinking, well, we need to figure out a way to make it happen then. This is, this is what needs to be done, this is what has been spoken. And so I feel like our job then is to see that that happens, and to make sure it's done well. I, I'm not so concerned as far as what it's exactly going to look like. I would like to be kept abreast of the progress that's being made, this is what we think we're going to do for, or this is what we scheduled for PD, you know, those kinds of things. But I don't sit here and spin my wheels on how it's going to flesh out. I'd like to, like to know what it's going to look like, but I've got 100% confidence that the folks that have created this will be the ones that are implementing it. So I'm just here to say, I support it, and I would like to be kept informed. So I guess that's kind of a, the aerial view that I, that I feel like I've taken on this whole thing. Because I don't have any grave concerns, because it's been from the ground up. And so many community individuals and organizations and, I mean, it's such a breadth of individuals that have created this, I think it's our job to see that it happens. It's not like it wasn't pie in the sky. I don't really feel like it's pie in the sky. I think it's very, very practical in the sense that this is what our school district has been tasked to be, and so we're here to make that happen. That's kind of what my approach is.
Spoken like a teacher.
Well, we're going to make it happen, so.
No, I, I agree. The barriers that I see, one is, we haven't seen it yet, so ELD, and I'm so pleased that the parents would be involved and listen to, and students as well, as obviously as our, our professional staff. It's been said, it is about community participation and community, letting everybody know what's going on. And in this community, I've learned that we want to make sure that the facts are out and people know, and that they're involved, and they're, it's clearly communicated to folks, well, we're doing this, the next step is this, the next step is this. So everybody knows and not wondering, and the little Facebook thing sometimes that goes around. And, I mean, I have the answer for time. Smaller class size. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Smaller, smaller class size is yours to get around to the kids.
Yeah. Still doesn't give you more time for content, but yeah.
Does anybody feel like they need any additional information to be able to vote, make a decision about next month?
Yeah, are there any outstanding questions? ELD is the big one, right, obviously? Which we'll treat in a little bit of a separate way, so.
A parallel path.
Correct, yeah. You know, I will say that, that I think one thing that is going to come up, and this has been a concern ourselves, voiced over and over again, is designated ELD time.
Yes.
And by law, we have to have a time where ELs, the English learner students, are taught explicit skills in English language development. And how to do that is going to be something that we have to really carefully consider. So I really appreciate the comments that were made about not separating as much as possible, not alienating as we have unintentionally in the past in our elementary school and causing divisions and hurt. And it has been a painful process to hear the stories and the experiences that some of our parents and kids have had. And so we certainly don't want to relive that, but it's going to be something that we need to pay close attention to, so.
I guess my final comment would be, I hope that the community has recognized that this is a priority for this board, that we see this as incredibly important, and I think we've moved in that direction and have been, and helped, an instrument of change or supportive change, that I strongly hope that the community does not start second guessing where we go with some of these decisions. Does that make sense? Like, I hope that, that we've built some trust, that we've built some, there's some faith in how we're going to implement these programs. Certainly, we're open for conversation, and I would encourage people to have those conversations. But I guess my comment out loud would be, I hope that we can be supported too and trusted. I guess that's just a comment I wanted. I guess that's just a comment I wanted to make out loud.
Thank you. Right, so are there any other comments or points of discussion? So we will bring this back in February for more discussion and, and hopefully approval from you all. So, thank you.
And thank you for all the comments. We appreciate that. Okay, um, the next item, uh, resolution number 2013 National School Counseling Week.
So this is our chance, our, our annual um, week where we honor the counseling staff in our schools. And we have wonderful school counselors who deal with some of the toughest issues that we have coming through the schools, not in terms of students, but the issues that the students are dealing with. And I want to read a few of the things that are included in this resolution. Um, "School counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. They're actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. They help parents focus on ways to further educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And they work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. They identify community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society." Um, we live in a, a day and age where it's well documented, not just in Sonoma County, but nationally. Depression and anxiety are at an all-time high in youth. And there's a number of reasons why. And so our counselors are dealing with more of that than they have in the past. And they're doing a phenomenal job. And so I just want to thank them. Not only are they, um, doing a wonderful job academically in helping kids realize their hopes and dreams for their lives, but they're helping them work through really difficult issues that have not been typical uh, until maybe the last five or seven years. So, um, they do a great job. We're privileged to have the ones we have and, um, it's our pleasure to recognize them uh, on the 15th of January, so.
That's today. No, Feb, uh, proclaims February 3rd to 7th.
I'm sorry, it's February 3rd to 7th.
Uh, is the National School Counseling Week.
I read the wrong date, yeah.
Do I have a motion to pass resolution?
We are recognizing them today, though.
We are recognizing them. Woo! Uh, um, do I have a motion to, uh, for resolution number 2013?
So moved.
Second.
And it's a resolution, so a roll call vote, is that right or no? No?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. I. I. It's a long one.
I.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. So we are doing reports and then we're going to be taking a 10-minute break. So a half report. I saw Sally here for a while.
She was here, she did tell me she didn't have a, a formal report, though.
Okay. Uh, HADA or, HADA, HADA report, yeah.
He's not even here and we did counselor week.
Wrong thing to run. Okay, um, so just two things. Oh, I'm Karen Reynolds, Chief Negotiator for HADA. Um, the executive board is going to be sending out a survey to HADA members in regard to school morale, just checking to see school morale. And when we get those results in, we'll bring that to leadership and go over it with Superintendent Van de Hooven. Uh, and then the other one is that we're looking forward to our negotiation session on the 23rd of January and hoping we can get some real work done.
As are we, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Uh, CSEA, it's not today, Student Trustee Report.
My reports are never that long, as you may know. Uh, I'd like to start off by saying I missed you guys' last meeting. I was terribly ill and I had to study for my calculus final. So, uh, there's that. Also, thank you for the kind words.
Priorities.
Yes. Uh, well, did he pass? I don't know if he passed, sorry. Did you pass?
Of course.
What kind of question is that?
Yes, well, we were very proud of you and your speaking accomplishments.
Oh, thank you very much.
Right, when do, when do you compete again?
Uh, March 20th, I believe.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, good luck.
Oh, and yeah, so tomorrow there's a Governance Council. I'll be attending for debate purposes. Uh, this Friday is actually the Senior Dinner Dance.
Oh.
Uh, it starts at 6 o'clock. It's free for all seniors due to the money the senior class made. And about a month ago, we, uh, the band held their annual music concert, winter concert. And half the proceedings, uh, went to fire victims, just like last year. The concert was called Music Saves Two, uh, due to the fire victims. Uh, Career Day is going to happen at the Junior High, February 26th. So all students will be exposed to different careers that day. And FMC, I don't know the full story, but a teacher has been out since October with a surgery and medical procedures. So that grade made a video saying like a get well soon video, which I thought was adorable. Uh, just saw that this morning, I think, and that's about it. Any questions?
No, but I just want to commend Ms. Vips, is that?
Yeah, Ms. Vips.
Yes, for that video that she made for Mateo. It was just so heartwarming and the whole staff participated and it was just so beautiful. Awesome.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Alex.
Uh, Board of Trustees Report, any updates? I, I went to my, I went to HEP meeting last night. That was good, focused, a lot of things going on.
Um, I want to thank, um, HUSD for the Junior Internship Program. I went to that luncheon today and just to see all the mentors that volunteer their time and, and share their knowledge and experience with our juniors is just pretty incredible. My, um, my son will be, um, participating in that this year and he's super excited to, um, participate in that. So, yeah, it's just such a great opportunity for our students to learn in the real world.
Where, where's Elias going to be?
He's going to be at, um, with Lockheed, the computer.
Oh, yeah.
One Country Computer.
Right.
Nice.
Good, doing IT, yeah.
Yep.
Very cool. Yeah, that was a lovely lunch.
I would just like, and the culinary department that made that lunch was, it was so good. It was really, really.
It was really good.
Mediterranean food, it was just delicious and they were so professional in their presentation of it. So anyway.
And it's year nine of the internship program, which is pretty incredible.
Amazing.
I'll just second what, uh, RSeller said. It was great.
I would like to recognize Ms. Messicks and Mr. Franny for the Todd Parr Awesomeness this week. Yes. That was, I had the, just delightful pleasure of tending the first time he came a few years. Well, I don't know if it was the first time, but the, when he came a couple of years ago, didn't see it this time, but heard all about it, saw lots of pictures and, um, it was just awesome, so. Super fun, so thank you.
With mac and cheese.
That's exciting. Appreciate that. Those kids will talk about that forever. I'm talking about it and I think it's, I talk about it all the time. So thank you, thank you for that. It's awesome.
Would it be helpful to anyone else to get a list of what committees we were all assigned to last month?
You can do that.
Can we do that? Thank you.
Karen, you ready for that?
Yeah. And then whatever it takes to get on whatever lists we need to be on, like a half, you know, a, a list or a D-LAC or, you know what I mean? It, I know, it's like, so.
And when we're supposed to show up, because I didn't come to the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, to get on like minutes.
Chamber thing or whatever that thing is that I'm on.
Yes, I realized that when I got there, yeah.
Yeah. The transition time.
So I saw the picture, but I thought, oh, I missed that.
I'll remind you, yeah. It's the first Thursday of the month.
Yeah, it's, it's just this transition time.
I need a reminder.
We're going to take a break. Can we keep it till like less than 10 minutes and be back at like, uh, 8:30?
Sure.
Yeah, we have to be done by 9:00.
Just a break, the bathroom? Yeah, yeah, bathroom, quick bathroom break and then we'll get back. And we only have like two, not horribly long, hopefully.
Okay, so I'll give you guys a minute to get this PowerPoint up on your devices. Um, I think it'll be a lot easier if you can see what I'm talking about. We apologize, the screens aren't working. I'll give you guys a minute to navigate to this deck. It's a black cover sheet. Yeah.
I'm, I'll go.
Okay. So, uh, lot of data here and we'll try to move through this quickly. Um, this is the third year of the District Data Dashboard, um, or the School Dashboard, pardon me. Um, a couple reminders, just so we can get this color coding in our mind. I know I'm always like, wait, okay. Yellow is worse than green, right? Yeah, so just, you got to remember the Roy G. Biv. Um, red is not good. Orange isn't great. Yellow's okay. Yellow, the state is an average in most places in yellow. Um, green is good. Green is where we want to be. And blue is, is pretty darn amazing, okay? So red, no, no good. Orange, mm, not happy. Yellow, we'll take it, but there's definitely room for improvement. Green, good. Blue, exemplary. The other thing to remember, and you know, this is still new, we're getting used to. And I think that the state, um, who works on this is still trying to figure out status and change. So it's both status, what are you at that year? And how did it change from the year previous, right? So it's both status and change, that's how we get these colors. If you were to navigate to the website, you can get a ton of information. And I encourage you guys to go on there, play around, go on the California, um, schooldashboard.org, California School Dashboard, uh, play around, click the links. There's way more than I could present to you here. I'm going to hit some highlights, but I encourage you, um, not only to look at the PowerPoint here, but to CaliforniaSchoolDashboard.org. Click around, play around. If you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer any of your questions via email, phone, meeting, walk you through it. Um, an important part of this is that we're, multiple measures. Far gone now are the days of API and AYP where it was based only on test scores, that we were held accountable really only for test scores. Um, so it is a true dashboard. We're getting better at looking at multiple measures and understanding multiple measures. Um, so what we're going to review tonight are these six. Suspension, chronic absenteeism, ELA, math, college career, and graduation. So I'm on this at a glance two-year analysis. Couple of things to point out is that the charter school is not included in the District Data Dashboard. Our District Data Dashboard, if you were to look up how many students that includes, is it includes just over 1,300 students? So the color coding that you see in those first two columns do not include the roughly 300 charter students. We know that we would probably be slightly a little bit better in all areas. As you can see, um, Hillsburg Charter, and I'll explain why there's orange. It's this very strange thing in terms of both status and change. I'll get into that in a minute. So I'm happy, based on what's looking like we are heading towards tonight, we will have one dashboard that will include all of our students. Um, and we won't have to do this monkey business of trying to figure out of what would it mean for us as a district if those 300 elementary students were a part of our district data? Um, so we're focusing on 2019. Do you, that, this is the data that was just refreshed, so this is based on the 2018-19 school year. I'm happy to report we have no red for all students at both the district and school levels. So no red for all students. That's a good thing. We did not have that last year. HCS, here's, here's a weird thing. You'll see it moved from green to orange, but the status is relatively low. If you look at, it's worth taking a second to look at the asterisks down there at the bottom. Um, the suspension status is 1.1%. So in a school of less than 300 kids, you're talking about two students being suspended. Point 03 increase moved us from green to orange. So this is where the state needs to get a grip on small school populations. 1.1 at a school of less than 300 kids, we're talking about two individual students. Maybe three. Yeah. Chronic absenteeism, and, um, we can get into this. The state wants us to be below 10% overall. Um, a reminder that chronic absenteeism is a student that is absent for 10% of the school year. So for us, you know, 181 school days, 18 days for any reason, for any reason. They're sick, they went on vacation, they didn't decide, they decided not to come to school for any reason. So chronic absenteeism. So again, in the charter, you see going from green to orange. The chronic absenteeism rate was 6.5%, but we had a 1.3% increase. So it's still relatively low, but because of the 1.3% increase, we got knocked down into the orange at the charter school.
Does the chronic absenteeism dates include if you take homework, like for credit with you? I mean, that doesn't happen.
So if you have, if you not only take, but fulfill a, um,
Independent.
Independent study contract. So it's not just about us giving it to the student. It's about them bringing it back completed.
Gotcha.
The next day, when they get back.
When they get.
It has to be right away.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of rules.
Oh, I don't.
Okay, so let's move to suspension rate. Let's look at this a little bit. Um, I'll get towards the end. Um, this is the primary data source that we're to use to inform the LCAP. Uh, we are on the brink of writing a new year, a new three-year static document. Um, so we'll be using the Portrait of a Graduate. We'll be using the HUSD Leadership Competencies. We'll be using all this great work we've done with Equity Task Force and our working groups to inform our LCAP. What the state wants to see in the LCAP writing and what we have to reflect most closely on is the data in the Data Dashboard. Um, so you'll see there's direct correlation here to the LCAP actions and services that are listed in the LCAP. That's what you have there on the left. Um, so, so some things that are good. District moved from red to yellow. We have three subgroups that are no longer in red. And the students with disabilities decreased significantly by 2.5%. Um, so we think these actions and these services, you know, particularly around trauma-informed practices, improvement in communications with families, restorative practices are starting to take hold. We're starting to see some of the fruits of that labor over the last 18 months or so, since those have been more a part of the work and the dialogue that we have with our educators and with our kids. In 2017, we were in the green for suspension. Our suspension rate as a district was only 4.2%. Um, so we're at 6.8%. In order to get down into the green for elementary, you have to be at 3%. Middle school, no more than 8%. And high school, less than 6% of your student body can be suspended. Questions? Yeah, let's do it.
Any thoughts on the higher suspension rates for English language subgroup at the high school and?
Yeah, we've been having a lot of conversation, Diane, the principals, school psychologists, counselors, and I for, um, you know, well, we, we kind of saw this coming last year. Um, and the data I got today, updated data from Principal Miller. At this time last year, he had, uh, let's see, I wrote it down. I can't remember if it's 27 or 27. Um, first semester in 2018-19, we had 26 students suspended at the middle school at this time last year. Um, in the first semester of this year, we have seven students that have been suspended. Um, and, uh, you know, we're, we're not talking about defiance. We're talking about cannabis use, significant issues of those seven suspensions and, and. Individual students.
Instances of suspension, yeah.
Yeah, it is, uh, uh, what is counted is any student for any part of the day once. So if you. Correct.
Yes.
If you're suspended for half a day, one. Yeah. Um, so our English language learner population at the junior high and the high school is, uh, very small. We're talking about 50 to 60 kids at the junior high and 20 to 30 kids at the high school. Um, so 8% of a small number. However, it's not what we want it to be, right? And we see things playing out that we're, we've been talking about. And we see things playing out that we're, we've been talking about in the term, in terms of feeling included. Um, I'll say that both Bill and Principal Miller, pardon me, Bill Halliday and Principal Miller, um, when they were reflecting on this with me, talked a lot about having the same student expectations for now two years at the junior high and three years at the high school. The eighth graders last year had three principals in three years. Consistent routines at lunch, consistent expectations across the building. When you talk to Connie Marks and Erin Ryan, they feel as the dean and assistant principal, they're seeing the results of the behavior, the positive behavior intervention and restorative practices. And really, helping all of our kids feel worthy and not feel like they wanna act out in order to get away from school.
Have we done, like, any empathy interviews with those students, or?
Yeah.
Just more root cause analysis of why they're being suspended?
Yeah. In fact, Sarah Loney, our CI Director, Continuous Improvement Director from the county office, we were in differentiated assistance last year for this, this very reason. Um, and it was a big focus of our efforts last year. Not only did we do empathy interviews with every single student that was suspended, both our junior high and high school staff administrators shadowed a student for the day. We feel like we've got some good data. We've looked at, why were kids getting suspended? What was the suspension for? How long was it for? Were, were similar situations being treated similarly? What interventions happened before suspension?
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I'm curious, because our English learners, are, is it, is there a language barrier there that's maybe causing some of their frustration, or they're acting out? It's a question.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, I'll say, antedoteally, from the process that I participated in, and I wasn't in every single meeting with Diane, the principal, Sarah, and others. Certainly, there is a, um, self, a bit of self-fulfilling prophecy amongst those students, and who they see themselves as scholars or not in the building. Yeah. Okay, let's move on. Unconscious, or pardon me, uh, chronic absenteeism. You can see that overall, as a district, we're in the green. That's good. We wanna be below ten percent at, you know, at the least. So, drops, which is good, right? You want lower. This is one where you want arrows to go down. You want less chronic absenteeism. I'll say, uh, wonderful things about Alma and Espy, our parent outreach and education coordinators, and helping all of our families, particularly our bilingual families, understand how to make a phone call when your kid is sick, right? How to get help, how to get homework, how to, how to interact with us in a way that chronic absenteeism isn't an issue. How to complete the, the short-term independent study contracts. They've been, they've been just a blessing to us. So all, all the groups improved or maintained. We are paying more attention. You'll see some areas there. Students with disabilities is, is our highest at thirteen point six percent. We did not have a drop there. Again, some of this is about school avoidance. Some of this is about, um, anxiety and mental health. That enters into the picture that, um, you know, your parent can call you in sick, 'cause you're not feeling well, and that counts on chronic absenteeism. And trying to, again, root cause analysis. Is that anxiety? Is that a mental health issue? Is that conflict in the home? Vacations.
I mean, there are kind of, used to be issues around the holidays with some of the Latino families.
That's really stemmed, it's changed quite a bit.
Interesting.
Yeah. And it's, it's more, um, you know, an extra Monday here to go to Disneyland, an extra Friday there to go skiing.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Those add up. And then you're sick a couple days. Yeah.
We used to have a ski week.
Yeah.
And now we're gonna have a fire week.
Okay, let's move on to English Language Arts. So we're seeing some gains here. We're in yellow overall. I wanna call out, while there is work to do with students with disabilities, and help us understand what those numbers mean. Um, let's use SWD, Students with Disabilities. Eighty-five points below the scaled score on average. So when you take all the students with disabilities who tested, and you average their scaled score, they were eighty-five points below what they would need to be meeting expectations. Below hitting that three on the CASP. However, we had a forty-point jump with these kids in English Language Arts. Something's working. We're on to something. You saw a presentation last time, I think it was, um, about our full inclusion model. Uh, we have more co-teaching happening, um, particularly at the junior high school this year. Um, we've made some changes to the curriculum that we use. We've provided, um, additional training for our, um, regular education teachers in differentiation. This is something that Diane and I, and our special educators and our regular educators have really been focused on. We know there's still work to do, but an increase of forty points, I'll take it.
And across the board, everybody went up at least four points. And that's, that's incremental, but it's solid incremental growth. Towards a high bar, so. It's great to see.
Yeah. Let's move on to math. So I wanna remind you, from the CASP presentation that I did, that we saw huge gains in CASP at the elementary level. Multi-digit percent gains in our elementary schools. We saw decent gains at the junior high. We're seeing nice little movements, right? We're not yet seeing double-digit gains like we did in the elementary, but we're moving in the right direction. We saw thirty-point tumble, thirty percentage point tumble in our eleventh graders in math. Still trying to figure that one out. There's a lot of reasons why. Yeah, Alex, those are you and your buddies. No, I'm just kidding. Did, did you wanna comment?
Uh, last year, when I was doing the CASP testing in a junior seminar, it was an interesting time.
Thank you, Trustee Kiff.
That's, that's all that I have to say.
Yeah.
This is on a video.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. War for, uh, trying your best.
I appreciate that, Alex. You know, you're, when you're in eleventh grade and you've got AP testing, you're looking down at your college applications, you're looking at summer internship applications, you're looking at a job, you're, you know, there's a lot going on. It is really challenging to make this test be important to eleventh graders. We're working on it. You know, I, I'm thrilled that we're seeing these rises, you know, nineteen-point gain with our English language learners, fifteen-point gain with our students with disabilities. You see that one-point loss with white students. You know, I would attribute a large degree of that to eleventh-grade slide. Four subgroups improved ten or more points in math. Again, I think we're headed in the right direction. Yellow isn't the state average. Uh, we're seeing some nice improvement. We'll continue to the work that we've been endeavoring upon.
Erin, 'cause, I mean, these are really nice gains. What do you think, um, that was attributed to?
You know, when I talk to our teachers about that, um, and I've asked pretty much all of them that at this point, Emma Figueroa that was here, and I think some, Jamie, you might have been around when I've asked her this multiple times, and others. A change in mindset of our teachers and of our students, that they can do it. This growth mindset and the work that we've been bringing in with Dr. Joe Bowler, in believing in them unequivocally. And this idea that all of our students can learn, and they can, and we'll get them there, and we're gonna, we're gonna get them there. We will. The growth mindset. I think also, the, um, we've taken a hard look at our practices. To be honest, in the early years of our ELD program, math instructional time was not what it should have been. So part of it, honestly, is just spending time on math. And, and making that as important as literacy and helping us understand, you know. Chris said it best, the story you were telling about being in Erin Basida's classroom, and using that around the, um, Portrait of a Graduate and the example of, they're thinking critically, they're talking to each other, they're writing about math, and not thinking about math as this timed worksheet that they do really quickly. Um, so looking at our, our instructional model, how we work with math, how, how we understand mathematics as a discipline, and the growth mindset. I'd say it, those, those two things together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's great.
And I just wanna say, you know, we're the first to bark. We want this to be better, and, you know, we're expecting more, and, you know, we, that's partly our job, but I really just wanna say, I really do, any growth is, needs to be celebrated, so.
Absolutely.
Really duly appreciate that. I don't think, we get excited sometimes about seeing the growth as we do. When are we gonna see growth, you know? So, I just wanna take the time to say that, you know, that's exciting. It's very exciting.
It is.
You do hear the excitement in the voices of the teachers. You know, that they, they feel differently about it too, so, that they're carrying that on from their kids, so.
Yeah.
It's exciting, so thank you.
Yeah.
I wanna add a, add a, add a, an anecdote.
Geez, I can't. It's a tough word.
I was watching, um, a fifth-grade teacher last week do the pit. Talking about growth mindset, and she, one of the students, when they were writing, doing the pit, writing about it. What do you say when you're at these different places? Talked about it at the bottom of the pit, that it's kind of a maze. It was really a beautiful, um, picture, but those kids, when they're talking about that, they're talking about that mindset, the mindset shift to, this is hard. I've got some tools here that I can use to get myself back out of that. And that is a very different, a completely different stance.
I'm not good at math.
For kids.
It's not that, I'm, I'm not good at math, I don't do math.
Yeah, it is completely different. And to wa, to watch these kids, now, they had a little bit of it last year, 'cause I'm familiar with these students. They knew exactly, and it, it is a complete shift for those kids to be thinking that way about how, about anything. It was really, it is fascinating.
Well, and we plan before the end of the year, we'll be, we're working on updating the math site action plans right now. Um, we hope to bring those to you in, in March. I was just on the phone this afternoon with our, um, with Joan Easterday, who's our facilitator for the lesson study work that we're doing, that started at the middle school last year. Um, and I think I've shared with you that all three of the middle school teachers are all in from day one this year. Um, we now have all three fifth-grade math teachers and the entire high school math department working on lesson study. In fact, the math.
Wow.
Department at the high school just did a survey, um, equity survey and a growth mindset survey with all of their, um, students to prepare for their public lesson. So we'll be doing a public lesson in a fifth-grade classroom and a public lesson in the high school in May. Um, so now we've got fifth, all three middle school, and the entire high school department participating in the, the math lesson study.
That's amazing.
That really is.
That's amazing.
That really is.
Yeah, and they're running with it. I mean, it's really nice, 'cause I am not micromanaging it at all. Yeah, they are really leading it as teachers.
That's exciting.
And I wanna add, when we were at the summer program, what you were saying, Judy, you, there was one little kid, I don't remember what grade, but he was sitting at the table, and you kinda came over to him and said, he really struggles. He's been struggling with math and this, and so you could literally see him, all the kids are working on stuff, and he had pushed his chair away from the table and was like this. And he was way in the pit, like, way in the pit. And, but he, and Erin went over and, you know, crushed down, and, hey, you know, what's going on? What are you working on? And he just, like, almost had checked out, and, and she got him back at the table, and what else could you do? And some of the kids at the table kinda started talking to him and helping him through it, and, and he kind of lit back up. Like, he just came alive again, and then they figured it out, and, and it was such a visceral moment of, like, really seeing. And, and I think you had told me that this was a kid that he would hit that point during the day, and then he was done for the day. He was like, I can't do this, back out, and then he, he was, he was done for the day. And so, that he can find his way back out of that. How can that not be, like, powerful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that his peers are a part of bringing him back in as well. That it's not all teacher-directed, that I have to wait for the teacher to come by and help me, but I know I can get my peers to help me out. Okay, let's go on to college and career, so we can get out of here on time. So, uh, broken out here, I have both HUSD and HHS. HUSD includes Marcy Basera Academy. So we mentioned that we have about twenty students at any given time enrolled in Marcy Basera Academy. You know, I'll be completely honest, that Marcy Basera Academy is not a college preparatory program. Um, it is an alternative high school. It is a high school where kids are severely credit deficient. Um, they have nearly every single one of them, um, major life crises going on, either within their family, and most of them for themselves. So HUSD data includes our twenty, I think we've got twenty-two kids. Last year, we had twenty-four, so that includes those students in the HUSD. Not to minimize the importance of alternative education. But when we're looking at college and career readiness, I wanna be sure that we separate our alternative ed program that serves a small number of students with the high school in total. So, you know, overall, the high school's in the green. The, um, the Hispanic students, yellow, forty-two percent, a cha, an increase of point oh-four. They're 1.6% away from green. That's two kids in a school our size. That's two kids away from getting our Hispanic subgroup in, into the green. Um, and while I would want more than half of our, our students to be considered college and career-ready, you know, I'll, I'll take it for now. Uh, we think we're on to something.
Is that A to G coursework, or I'm not sure?
Yeah, let's go to this. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how do you, how, how do you come up with that, right? How does the state say they're college and career prepared? And, um, know that there's prepared and there's approaching. So all we're looking at right now are prepared. So I'll give you a second to read those criteria there. So let's use CTE pathway completion. We have five CTE pathways at itty-bitty little Healdsburg High. Ag, culinary, auto, media, CASA are all programs of study for CTE. According to this, we had only nine kids. I had nine kids as CTE completers in Ag. But they also have to get Sback met on ELA slash math. So this is where our eleventh-grade Sback scores kill us, right? We know we have more than nine CTE completers between the five CTE programs of study we have. But those kids didn't also get standard met on the CASP or Sback, right? Synonymous. Sback and Cas, uh, CASP is California's version of the Sback. I also wanna point out that the college credit courses, um, I mentioned to you guys last year, we were in the same place where we had zero, right? We know we had kids earn college credit, right, Mom? We, and the entire region, if you look up Annalee, Sonoma Valley, Windsor High, Windsor had four. Somehow, they got four. But every other school in our region has zero. We have a problem with how we're reporting from areas to the state. We cannot figure out what it is. Um, I've tasked John Camera, who is our district data, um, integration specialist. We gotta figure this out, right? We thought we had it figured out, 'cause we had zero last year. I have the data in front of me. We had seven that would have been prepared. So we had seven students in the class of 2019 that had two semesters of college-level coursework with a C minus or better. And then we had fourteen who were, would have been approaching. And those are students that have one semester of college-level coursework with a C minus or better in an academic or CTE course. So if they take PE, they take the Intro to College course, those don't count. They have to be academic or CTE. So we, a kid that takes a welding class, a kid that takes, sign language, right? So again, this data is not, we know it's more than fifty. So again, this data is not, we know it's more than 50% because then this is the numbers that feed that percentage on the previous page, right? So we have a problem in data reporting and we also have a problem in CASP that's killing us with our 11th graders on this.
Excuse me, Erin.
Yeah.
Do we need to move?
We need to vote on 15 more minutes. Yeah.
Do I have a motion to extend the meeting for two more minutes?
So moved.
On paper?
Aye. We celebrated this at the very beginning of the year, the first board meeting of the year, and I just want to highlight it again and say it publicly. It thrills me to know that I have 25 students who are in the state seal of bilinguality and as we heard tonight, and I know we're going to have more, right? With the Andre Ruizes of the world and what we, we plan to do in our elementary school, that pleases me greatly. Okay, graduation rate. Again, on paper, it looks a little scary. I know that we've had some previous conversations. This is not brand-new data to us, but I think it's worth putting out there in the public. Grad rate, depending on whether you use a four-year cohort or a five-year cohort. The other thing that we get hit with, and you can see it in the notes, so CHISB, the California High School equivalency exam, does not count. So we had three students take the CHISB in the class of 2019 and pass it. We had two students who earned certificate of completion. So our students who have severe learning disabilities and they, they are not on the path to earn a diploma. We know they are not earning a diploma. They have severe learning disabilities. We grant them a certificate of completion. We had two students, we had three that are still enrolled as fifth-year seniors, so we had eight true dropouts in the class of 2019. That is a higher number than normal. We normally have three to four kids. We had eight true dropouts, four of them came from Marcy Basara, four of them came from the high school. We know who these kids are. We know who they are when they're freshmen. We work with them, we provide credit recovery, we provide tutoring, we provide counseling, we SARB them. We're, we know who these boys and girls are. It is sad stories when you, when you know who these children are, brings, just thinking of a couple of the kids that I got to know. It's not okay that eight kids don't graduate from Hillsburg High, but we know who they are and we're working with them. Okay, so this is where we're at. We need to pay special attention to the, to our subgroups. Any that are in orange or red, we discussed our English learners at the junior high and high school. While small in number, it's a concern that these young people are being suspended at a higher rate than they should be. So paying a lot of attention to that, and I reviewed the data, so I don't think I need to go over that again, but we feel like we're headed in the right direction. You also see students with disabilities there in chronic absenteeism, language arts and math, but again, nice point gains, right? 40-point gains, 30-point gains, so we're getting there with them. I don't want to minimize the Hispanic subgroup in any of these areas either and know that, you know, we have a lot of work to do as a community, you know, to the point of the speaker who was here talking to us about unconscious bias and being a trauma-informed school district. We know that this is not an easy, an easy place to live sometimes. And we, we, you know, we have more equity training, we have more unconscious bias training, we have more work to do in order to make sure that all of our kids get what they need and when they need it. So we'll be paying special attention to these subpopulations, investigating in the data, and you will see that show up in our LCAP planning. So when we highlight what's in our LCAP, you're going to see these special and student, subgroup populations rise to the top. Okay, questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay?
Nice seeing the gains, thank you.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Progress. All right, thanks. I'm happy to, if you guys go on the website and you're playing around and find something that you're curious about or want to talk more, always open to that.
I'm really glad that Trivial Pursuit Things are gone.
Yeah, yeah, the gauges.
This is easier.
Okay.
And I do want to, I just want to say that you getting emotional about those students that are not graduating, just like, yeah, thank you for caring so much.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, last topic, 10.2A resolution, Redwood Empire Schools Resig. I think we should read this word for word. It's like 30, 80 pages, how many pages? It's like...
I think we should be tested on it, on the content, huh?
Yeah, on page 36.
On the bylaws for the group?
Debbie's going to give you the Reader's Digest version.
Yay.
Oh, thank you, Debbie. It's very nice.
Can we not approve it because they boosted our deductible for fire?
It's not...
How many millions of dollars?
Five, but it's not their fault, that's, they're not the actual insurer, right? They're the shopper of our insurance, so.
I move we accept resolution 2014.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, anything else? We do not need to recess to close session? Phew, thank goodness, okay, the meeting is adjourned.